Okay. All right, that motion passes and now we are, and there is no public motions other than that one coming out of that in camera session. So we are now going to move on to 7.2, which is the COVID-19 Recovery Task Force update. I do believe we have Alan Tom and Sandeep Beach McCutcheon who are going to do a quick presentation. Are they with us?
Yeah, they should be on the line, Mayor Herron.
Uh, Sandeep and Alan, are you there? Nobody wants to show up and talk to council.
I did, I did see them earlier.
Yeah. I don't see.
Did they get kicked out?
They are not there. Um, Trevor, can you send him a quick email telling the, that we're back and they can log in? Is there a presentation on this as well, Trevor?
Uh, yeah, they, they have a few slides and just, uh, I was going to introduce it quickly here as well.
Okay. Well, why don't we take a five minute break and just use the restroom or something and we will give them a chance to log back on. And so it's 3:18, we'll come back at 3:25. Sound good? Okay.
No Santa hat for you, Kevin.
Oh, look at you.
Dig my stuff up, I guess.
Mostly I'm really cold, so this is great.
Where'd you get that?
Well, the two, cause the one, like the, the city of St. Albert one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and then I, I live with a Santa, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah, that looks good.
Very festive.
Yeah, and it's warm.
I think it'd look better on Wes or me though, like we have that portion that we need.
So Kevin, somebody just tweeted me a picture that looks like the river has been cleared pretty much right outside City Hall and people are skating on it.
I, I sent that to Kevin this morning.
Did you?
For our wrecking parks and communications, people are aware of it too and they're, they're working on it. I've seen some media out on it already.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and I saw the firefighters put out a public safety announcement, but the fact that a resident just texted me a picture of it or tweeted me a picture, I'm like, ouch. And it's right outside City Hall to boot, right? Okay. Trevor, did you hear back from them?
So I should just walk around the corner from where I am right now, I guess.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, we should be good to go, Mayor Herron, once council, I think something happened with the breakout rooms there, but we're good now.
Okay, all right, uh, well, it's 3:25, so we're back. So Alan and Sandeep, are you with us? I see Sandeep's name there and there's Alan, okay. Sandeep, where'd you go?
I'm here.
Okay, do you want your under camera, you're gonna? There we go. Nope. There she is. Okay, so Trevor, I'll let you introduce this and then we can take it from there.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Herron, and so council received a primer on this back on November 30th from Ms. Monson and Mr. Crips. And here today to present the Recovery Task Force's interim report is Ms. Beach McCutcheon and Mr. Tom. So I'll take it over to them. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, go ahead, guys.
All right, I will just share my screen here. You can see it all right, presentation?
We can, yep.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Uh, good afternoon, thank you for having Sandeep and I present an update on the work of the COVID Recovery Task Force. Uh, to help guide the creation of our interim report, we've used a policy analysis approach. This process starts with problem identification, moves through strategy and policy development, and ends with policy implementation. Uh, through the spring and summer, we established the vision for the Recovery Task Force. We received information around emerging economic and social impacts to help frame the problems we were trying to address. And we settled on four problem statements in the summer. The task force utilized the Cultivate the Conversation web tool to solicit ideas from St. Albertans to support recovery, which closed at the end of November. The task force also identified several early wins and thanks council for their support on these initiatives, including the establishment of development bonds, advocacy for a testing site in St. Albert, and enhanced flexibility for restaurant patios.
We were able to identify the problems that will be crucial to recovering from COVID-19. These are the problem statements we focused on to guide our strategies and desired outcomes. And as they appear on the screen, what new policies or incentives are needed to help businesses adapt and innovate to ensure resilient and sustainable local economy? In a post-COVID world, how do we ensure people continue to choose St. Albert as a place to live, work, and play? How might we provide opportunities which increase inclusion and community connectedness within the city of St. Albert, especially for the most vulnerable populations? And four, how might we enhance the livability of residents, organizations, and businesses to become more resilient and thrive? The interim report is focused on strategies to address the problem statements and achieve the identified desired outcomes. In November, we launched a public engagement forum on Cultivate the Conversation, and we saw 31 responses to the following questions. What do you think should be done within the community to support local businesses and social profits? What do you think should be done within the community to support the overall St. Albert community? And what do you think should be done within the community to support residents? The themes you see here on this slide were ideas that fit within the scope of the task force, and we believe that these have been implemented into the strategies in the report. The key themes that emerged were establish a toolkit for businesses that will help them adapt to changing COVID-19 restrictions, help businesses navigate grants, loans, and other government assistance, promote year-round activities for the community, helping within St. Albert to support local businesses, increase activity in the city's downtown, and increase mental health supports for the community.
Although we have begun to develop strategies for recovery, we are still in a response phase as we go through the second wave of the pandemic. A number of our recommendations will be addressed in 2021 through work that is planned by the city of St. Albert utilizing existing resources. There are other recommendations that we are providing to council for your future consideration as resources allow and the pandemic situation evolves.
While the task force has come up with a number of recommendations for consideration, there are four that we believe have a higher sense of urgency and will have a higher impact for our community. And they are, number one, exploring options for business incentive programs. And number two, increasing community awareness of the programs and supports available through both the city and partner organizations to assist those in need.
Number three, enabling smaller spontaneous use activities that encourage residents to participate in year-round outdoor activities. And number four, reimagining the city's relationship with partner organizations that provide social services to our residents.
Finally, the task force is looking forward to our own visioning session in January 2021, where we will begin to work on approaches to implement the recommendations. And this concludes our presentation and we'd be pleased to take any questions you might have.
Awesome, yeah, I will send all the hard questions to you two. Ken and Jackie and I will just sit back. Is there any questions from any member of council? Sorry, let me just make my screen bigger. All right, I can see you all now. Uh, so any questions from members of council? Wow, that was easy. You guys got off easy. Go ahead, Council Hughes, and then Council Broadhead.
Um, yes, what would you wish that toolkit to include? For business, you said a business toolkit to help them adapt to COVID, what would that include?
So I think when it comes to a business kit for, and part of our visioning session that comes forward in the early part of 2021 in January is to think through the implementation approaches of these recommendations. So I think we'll expect to see some of that come through now, but we did mention earlier in the presentation around incentives for businesses. Uh, hard to say exactly what that would look like now, whether it's increased supports through collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce for businesses that are already within the city in terms of how to access resources, whether that be for financial information or operations to supplement supports for employees and, and business ventures, whether that comes into other financial incentives from the city or other levels of government that, that the city or the task force may advocate for. But that will be part of the activity that takes place in early January as we vision the implementation of these, of these recommendations. So this is part of a lot of a longer term where we've done that, uh, problem identification and some of the options for solutions. And now we'll have to move into the implementation of those options and what that means specifically.
So you don't really have a specifics of what will be in the toolkit then, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, not at this point in time. We'll have to work with the city and other support agencies.
Do you have an idea of when, I know that wasn't your top four priorities, but do you have an idea when that would actually come out? Cause there is a time factor in there, like.
Yeah, sure, and others feel free to jump in, but I would think at the pace and the focus on the visioning, I would think within the first quarter of 2021 as we work through those pieces. And I can't recall off the top of my head the exact timelines, but we set up on a bi-weekly basis, Council Hughes, for our meetings. Uh, and so once we move through that visioning exercise, we'll start moving through implementation aspects on these top priorities fairly quickly.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think for us, it was a big, um, this was our key focus to get to this stage where we could really start to zero in on things. And I think a lot of that heavy lifting will start after we do our visioning in January, we'll have a clearer picture of how we want to proceed. Okay, thank you.
All right, Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I didn't know whether you're on the call earlier during our, uh, open session for public, uh, speaking to the council, but a number of the, uh, citizens that came forward spoke of a, of a society that was fractured as a result of the COVID and the implications of, uh, you know, social responsibility that's been imposed upon the council. And I see that one of your, um, sort of thoughts are around community connectedness, vibrancy, pride, and sense of belonging. You say St. Albert is welcoming. Have, have you as a committee talked about how do we recover from a, uh, from an environment where within our own community, there's this, uh, I don't know if it's conflict so much as, as a, as a real sense of, of, of loss as around this whole, uh, pandemic? And how do we recover emotionally as much as we are physically and, and sort of economically? Have you given some thought to that?
It, it's a good question and it's a, it's a difficult question. I think that St. Albert as a community wouldn't be different than any of our neighboring communities and communities across the rest of Canada, North America, or others in, in the globe where we've had to manage around some of the, you know, we're social creatures and having to manage through that process. And there's no doubt that it has created some divides. Uh, I did hear the conversations or, you know, I did hear the conversations earlier today. And while the task force isn't within the mandate to, you know, address the questions that were being brought up before, I do believe the things that the task force is looking around at around, you know, the idea of spontaneous social activities, both during and beyond COVID as we move out of these and bringing communities together in smaller groups first, and then expanding that out across the city in ways that you can do more spontaneously. And we don't have to have the same kind of rigor or structure in terms of the pre-planning around some of that. Hopefully will help as time goes on to break down some of those barriers that have begun to form uh, through, through various decisions and the requirements, you know, from a medical perspective, and allow that healing process essentially to begin. And I think there's a large part to play, not only the responsibility within the city, but a responsibility of residents. And then how that works in conjunction with other social groups within the city, uh, and the surrounding area to support that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I've sort of advocated for that. When we come out of COVID, we have this massive blowout party. That's my particular perspective. But I'm just wondering as you go into your retreat in January, if you might wanna, uh, I don't know, you guys are brilliant in what you do, maybe put some thought to see if, I don't know, maybe there's a better mechanism than a big party.
It's something we're going to have to be mindful of, certainly, but I, I do think tagging on to what Alan said, um, we have heard moments in the community where people have just come together spontaneously on their own and, and taken it on to engage with their neighbors and taking it on to, to participate in activities. And I guess that's sort of the, the starting ground for it and everything else will, will build upon that. So we'll, we'll encourage and foster and advocate for that to happen at that level and trust that, that the steps we take afterwards will, will help in that process.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Uh, I would add, um, that Wes, we did actually have, um, Park and Rex come and talk to the task force about some ideas for larger block parties, parades and stuff in, in local neighborhoods. We, we were talking about that kind of stuff early in, and we, our input was asked for, and then in the end, we decided, um, to just not push forward on any of that because it was too soon because of the restrictions. Um, but I do see that conversation starting again, maybe this spring. We'll see. And if you notice, the, the report is kind of, it focuses on the economy for sure, but there's almost two other sections that one is for, yes, how do we support our most vulnerable? Cause they have been affected probably more severely than the rest. But there's also just the general average resident who's struggled through this and, and how can we? And that's that spontaneous community connections. Cause I, Alan said, we're no different, but I'd say we are different in that St. Albert really, well, I'm just proud of St. Albert, so I'll just say it. But St. Albert residents have, um, stepped up to the plate, um, to support each other. And I, if we start encouraging more of that and maybe celebrating some of the successes and the good news stories, then that will help with some of the, the mental strain and fatigue that everybody's experiencing, maybe even calm some of that division. That's, that's an optimistic outlook, but that's where I'm from.
Yeah. Fair enough, Madam Mayor, it's just that, and I know everybody else has received the emails too of people who have, who have not even left their house since, since March. And part of this, uh, issue in the community is that people are actually scared for their own personal well-being when they see people without masks.
Yeah.
And, and for some, it's a, you know, they think in terms of life or death. And so it's, it's not, uh, I guess it's not a, a surprise, I guess, if people react, so.
Yeah, the stories that we are hearing about the harassment for people that have exemptions, kind of indicates to me that St. Albert residents, for the most part, have really, really truly believed that masks do have value on a high majority, but it does not make it right. Of course, it's, it's never tolerated to harass, um, somebody with legitimate exemption. So they're heartbreaking stories and I just, I really struggle on how to solve that one. It's hard. All right, Council Hanson.
Thanks, uh, you know, and going back to Council Broadhead's big party, um, idea. Um, I, I think we keep, that's kind of the prize at the end of it all, uh, Wes. But what we, what we are trying to talk about is that we have some very, very unique assets right here in our city. We have a beautiful downtown, we have a trail system. We have things that other communities don't have. We've got Big Lake, we've got all this natural beauty. And are there ways that we can maybe not get together hundreds of people at a time? But are there ways that we can celebrate, um, all year round in small ways throughout our city? Uh, to keep, to keep the, um, to keep our chins up, to keep our attitudes up. And, and then at the end of all of that, be able to, uh, like, you know, the perfect example is, are those snow creatures that are, you know, along the River Valley? That spontaneous, uh, beauty that, that has just been given back to all of us. And as a city, we can encourage that kind of leadership, uh, in the city because it goes such a long way. So, um, the smallest acts actually have the biggest effect, we find. And so this COVID, we will have the big party. But in the meantime, we've got to have small wins along the way. And we, we are talking about all of those things.
Fair enough, thank you.
Any more questions? All right, so Trevor, um, what, so we're having our visioning early January. Uh, the task force is going to continue to meet for the next, can't remember how many months, probably the majority of 21. Uh, when's the next touch base with council?
Uh, there's not one scheduled at this point, Mayor Herron, I think that's part of the visioning exercise. But at this point, this is the interim report for council to receive as information. And then the next deliverable for the task force is to, to create a final report, uh, in 21, um, which again, subject to how the pandemic unfolds, I think is kind of when the final report will, will come forward.
Okay, all right, sounds good. All right, seeing no more questions, um, both Alan and Sandeep, thank you honestly, from the bottom of my heart for all that you are doing, um, for this task force and everyone, um, on the task force, in case some of them are listening. I don't want you to look like my favorites. Um, it's, I think it's been a, a great experience for everybody involved and I appreciate your time. So, and it has been a fair amount of time, so thank you for that.
Thank you for having us.
All right, um, look to either Ken or Jackie maybe to make them, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I had my hand raised in the chat, but yeah.
I'll bring it up, yeah.
No problem, uh, that the COVID-19 Recovery Task Force interim report attached to the December 21, 2020 Agenda Report be received as information.
All right, uh, any opening comments on that?
No, I think, you know, uh, you guys all covered all of the points. And I'm really going to look forward to, uh, the, uh, the community gathering in Wes's backyard when, uh, this is all over, we're going to have fireworks. Uh, but you know, these are, I, I just want to say thank you again also to, uh, the committee members. They've worked hard to arrive at this point and, uh, just, I just want to say thank you. We, they've committed a, a great amount of time, their own personal times, um, arriving at where we are right now. So thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else want to make a comment? Right, and Wes, when we have the party, we will let you, uh, lead the parade on that one. Cause you have been talking about that since the very beginning. All right, I'm going to call for the vote. And that one passes by majority or unanimously, sorry. And sorry, guys, I only have my surface screen today. I don't have multiple screens going, so I don't have the participant thing up all the time. Uh, so if you want to speak, just wave at me. It's probably the best until I get multi-screens going again. All right, um, what's next on our agenda? Uh, regional transit services, um, Trevor, it's probably you, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, don't have a presentation prepared for this item. Uh, I think everything is, is within the, the agenda report. And so really it is, is it, it's a housekeeping item, uh, to, uh, to become consistent with, uh, the new, uh, red tape reduction requirements.
Okay, no, I get that. I think Council Hughes probably pulled it off for the vote more than anything, but Council, do you have a question? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So when this was brought forward in February, this was before COVID, um, changed everybody's planet. So the, when, what was the updated and when has it been updated most recently for the cost? Expect to cost for each new sub, and the financials, I guess, is what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so.
Kind of broke up a bit there, Council Hughes, what was that? Right at the very end.
The financial.
Okay.
Like the finances that were given to us was in February, so ridership is not recovering. It's trying to figure out when it was last looked at.
So the most up-to-date version of the, the business case is, is available on the city's website. I think it was updated in June of, of 2020. Um, and so, uh, so, so all that would be, would be there, Council Hughes.
So that one, it looked like you were, uh, it was going to be about a six-month delay beyond what it was initially forecasted to come to the same level was what I remember seeing on that one. Am I, I'm just asking if I got those numbers wrong. It looked like it was like three or six months longer. They were projecting to break even.
Do you remember, Wes?
Yeah, it, so there was a, there was some delay, but I mean, the, the, the situation is simply this, is that the service will be provided as, as is being provided in the moment when it goes from, uh, the municipal service provision and it being provided under, uh, the RTSC. So, um, you know, it's, the RTSC is going to be respond, uh, responsive to the communities and the service sets in, involved at the time. So, um, COVID is, is a nationwide type, uh, impact on public transit, but not only public transit, but the, the merits of the business case are around the reduce, uh, reduction of, of duplication of services and efficiencies in that regard. And so the business model still sticks. And so the business model still sticks. And uh, for specifics, I, I don't know if Alan is still around, but uh, he might, I mean, he's here, so. Uh, but.
Go ahead. So, you can go ahead, Alan.
Is he there?
I, I think, I think he might have left, but uh, yeah, like if, if there are um, yeah, there, if there are specific questions too regarding kind of the, the business case, maybe we could take that as a, as an, as an information request, um, but yeah, the most up-to-date version is, is available on our website.
I guess what I'm wondering is like the assumptions. Initially, there's an assumption of an increase in transit ridership by four percent a year for it to come up with those numbers. Um, I don't know if we're going to even get to the numbers that we've had, let alone an expected increase a year after year. I just, I don't know if the assumptions have been actually reviewed to see if they're still valid. Um, to see if it's actually going to generate or be able to break even what they were claiming. Has any of that been done or really it's just last time I looked at it was June and and we don't know anything about whether the assumptions have changed.
Yeah, the, the business case was not built on, on increased ridership to generate the savings. The business case was, uh, the, the efficiencies was based on the reduction of the, of duplication of services and the more effective produ- production of services. We didn't rely on X number percentage of ridership growth to generate the, the savings. That wasn't it at all. It was around a, a, a region coming together to provide transit services more effectively by doing it together. It's like uh, you know, a synergistic effect of two plus two equals more than four, and that's the situation here. And uh, so, so that, that hasn't changed, but.
So was there?
Go ahead.
What, was the revenue model and assumption increased in, in ridership though? I just, that's the only question.
I, I think he said no. Is that right, Wes?
Uh, there was the, 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 the savings generated wasn't based on an assumed increase in ridership. It, the, the.
But the revenue.
Were generated out of efficiencies and reductions of duplication.
Okay, okay. I was asking about the revenue, not the savings though, so.
Right.
Fifty, if the revenue was increased based on increased ridership, did that number change? The June model? Okay. Okay, that's it then.
All right, um, any more questions? Go ahead, Counselor Hanson.
Yeah, so um, I'll, I'll, good questions from Counselor Hughes, but for the, for the purposes of this um, particular agenda report, this is really um, a philosophical question of whether we want to be part of a regional efficiency within a transit system. Uh, would that be fair to say? And maybe Counselor Broadhead could answer that. I mean, this is about opting into a collaborative approach around delivering services for the region.
Yeah, we actually made that decision back in, in February, right? This, all this is, is really aligning the motion by council to reflect the requirements of the new uh, and uh, fifteen point one of the MGA that was changed under the Red Tape Reduction Act. That's all that's here today.
So it's almost like a technicality of
Yeah.
A house, it's a housekeeping item to keep the, the uh, RTSC in line and moving forward.
Yeah, and to add, to add to that, Counselor Hanson, uh, once the initial application was sent in, I think literally the next day, the province changed the legislation, so that's, yeah, totally, this is just a housekeeping item.
So if the province hadn't changed legislation, this would not be in front of us. Okay. Any more questions? All right, Counselor Broadhead, do you want to make the motion?
Uh, certainly would. Do you want me to read the whole, I'll start right?
No, you don't have to do all the whereas's, I don't think.
The whereas's, okay. Um, I move that the city of St. Albert agrees to establish a regional services commission jointly with the other municipalities and specifies, one, the name of the regional services commission is the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission. Two, the names of the members of the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission are uh, the city of Beaumont, the town of Devon, the city of Edmonton, the city of Fort Saskatchewan, the city of Le Duke, the city of Spruce Grove, the city of St. Albert, and the town of Stony Plain. And three, that the names of the members of the first board of directors of the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission are Sam McCall Swain, Ray Ralph, Michael Walters, Gordon Harris, Glenn Finstad, Chantal McKenzie, Wes Broadhead, and Justin Laurie. Four, that the name of the first chair of the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Service Commission is Wes Broadhead.
Congratulations, Wes. Sure you want it? It's in the motion.
Serve it the will of the board, so.
Any comments on your motion, Wes?
Uh, opening comments is, is simply this, is uh, as has been said, this is a, an administrative uh, requirement to uh, to form the commission under the new fifteen point one of the MGA.
All right, anything to add?
And I would add, we are the last ones to pass this.
Oh, are we?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, nice to know that we've got regional. All right, um, anyone else on council want to make a comment? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. So that is carried um, by majority with Mayor Herron in favor, Counsel Broadhead in favor, and now Counsel Jolly in favor, Counsel Hughes against, Counsel Watkins in favor, Counsel Mackay in favor, and Counsel Hanson in favor. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda, uh, seven point four, which was the municipal budgets. I'm just going to bring it up so I can read the motion that we passed in consent. Okay, on consent, we passed that the two thousand and twenty-one consolidated municipal and utility budget in the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars uh, and the net tax requirement of one hundred and eleven million dollars, nine hundred and seventy-five, two hundred dollars, as shown in the attachment titled two thousand and twenty-one consolidated budget be approved. Number two, that the ten-year municipal growth capital plan provided as an attachment to the December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty agenda report titled two thousand and twenty-one municipal and utility budgets be approved. And number three, that the ten-year utility growth capital plan provided as an attachment to the December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty agenda report titled two thousand and twenty-one municipal and utility budgets be approved. So that was passed on consent and uh, and before I move on, I'll just thank council for the weeks of work on the budget and to Kevin and his whole team, especially Diane and her team, um, for bringing us such a lean budget. Next was seven point five on consent, which was the rapid housing initiative. The motion that uh, was passed was read as follows, that um, that AR twenty dash four oh five be rescinded. And that read that the grant application for the rapid housing initiative towards a transitional youth home housing model be approved in principle, including the requirement for a municipal financial contribution towards the project and that administration returned to council with specific details on the city's application prior to submitting to Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation for funding consideration. So that motion was rescinded. And that administration continued to work on a youth transitional housing initiative and apply for any future funding if it becomes available. Though kind of sad that the date um, for application was moved so quick forward and so quickly, so we couldn't really take advantage of that. But hopefully we will in the future. All right, seven point six, Alberta uh, community partnership was approved on consent. The motion that was approved reads as follows, that council supports Sturgeon County submission of a proposed city of St. Albert Sturgeon County intermunicipal development plan grant application to the government Alberta's Alberta Community Partnership Program. And number two, the council support the city of St. Albert submission of the proposed city of St. Albert, city of Edmonton intermunicipal planning framework grant application to the government of Alberta's uh, community partnership program. So uh, that one was passed on consent. Also on consent, we appointed um, the person in the position of chief legislative officer, city clerk be appointed as our returning officer for the two thousand and twenty-one municipal election. And we're also allowed to appoint a substitute returning officer, so the motion read that the city employee holding the position of deputy city clerk would hold that position for the twenty-one election. All right, number seven point eight was also passed on consent, which was a um, financial forecast update um, for November, December provincial COVID nineteen orders, and that was just received as information. And seven point nine was on consent. Which read that council supports the application of Alberta Environment and Parks to Public Safety Canada for grant funding under the National Disaster Mitigation Program and authorize the chief administrative officer to write a letter to Alberta Environment and Parks expressing council's support. All right, we are now on to bylaws. Eight point one is the face covering bylaw. I have uh, Mr. Jenke listed as the presenter. Do we have a presentation on this one? Percy, with us?
Hi there. No, we, uh, we don't have any presentation with, the AR stands as it is. The only piece of information to add is a little bit of a update from uh, Beaumont's council. They did meet to discuss their uh, uh, face covering bylaw. And it's extended till December first, twenty twenty-one or until a trigger of zero cases for fourteen to twenty-eight days has been met. They'll be discussing the trigger a little bit late further in January uh, and further clarification on whether it'll be the fourteen or twenty-eight days.
Okay, thank you for that update. Okay, I'm just going to open it up for questions. Go ahead, Counselor Mackay.
Excuse me, uh, just a question and maybe Percy, it's to you, uh, because of some of the challenges we get between um, when uh, the chief medical officer of health or the province uh, adjusts um, their orders or their guidelines, uh, there's a time lag, a significant time lag, uh, specifically around guidelines. So as the AR is currently written, and if council approves that we suspend our bylaw, um, and, and until the uh, province comes back and says, okay, well, their, their uh, mandatory masking is no longer in effect, then ours would kick back in. Isn't there, how do we deal with the time lag and the time difficulties? Because I mean, sometimes we don't get any prior notification that the province is going to issue that order. We just get told that date. So how do we deal with a time lag?
That might be a question more for Mr. Lafar. Uh, but uh, we, we do get uh, we get those orders as we, we see them, but I'll pass this to David.
Yeah, through the chair, the, the idea of, of the bylaw amendment that's being proposed today is that the timeline doesn't matter whenever, even if we don't get advance notice uh, at the, at the moment that there is no more um, provincial order that deals with masks in St. Albert, at least in effect in St. Albert. Uh, our bylaw automatically, without any, any further action, council kicks back into force. Then of course, council could, within a matter of, typically it would be about a week or two weeks at most, council could choose to do something different with the bylaw. You could even choose to repeal it at that time. But the idea is that if you pass this amendment, there would be no gap. There would be an automatic switch over from provincial regulation to um, uh, municipal bylaw, uh, no matter how much or how little notice we got from the province.
Thank you for the clarification. I guess maybe my question would be more logistically, and I see if Aaron's on the call or um, like, I mean, logistically, do we, does this create challenges then for our ME? I mean, we, then our MES officers lose the ability to enforce then, I'm taking it at the same time? Um, with, you know, because right now, our, see, we are, are ME off, MES officers, excuse me, are, are able to enforce the order. Um, and they can enforce our bylaw. Logistically, would there be a, would there be some confusion? I know there might be some around citizens, but how about our officers?
Yeah, through the mayor, I, um, I think I don't know if there'd be a lot of confusion. It would just probably take a couple of days for us to to sort out what that change is. Now, we're already well-versed. The officers are well-versed in the bylaw itself, so, so it's just a matter of, you know, when, if the uh, province stopped it tomorrow, um, our officers would still have the authority under the bylaw to immediately um, continue to enforce mask mandates until council chose to, to get rid of the bylaw. Um, so I'm not, I'm not sure there would be, you know, a, a huge challenge there. Um, I think, I think um, you know, in, in the absence of a bylaw, the potential what could happen is, you know, we may have a situation where the province does no longer pulls the authority for the officers to enforce the CMOH orders um, and the mask mandate still be in effect. And then in that kind of case, you know, from a local perspective, we wouldn't have the ability to to support the province um, in any kind of enforcement. I think that's unlikely. Uh, but that is, you know, one of the possibilities with the bylaw there.
Okay, I, I mean, I guess my questions are all around the confusions that, you know, we, we have a, a provincial order mandating masks, and then that all of a sudden disappears at three thirty in the afternoon potentially, or four o'clock when, when the CMOH gets up and delivers, or the premier delivers the message, and then the confusion could be, you know, people see that and hear that, and then have, uh, that's what they go by, and then they stop wearing masks, and then our bylaw kicks in. So I mean, it just opened, by suspending it, I'm just worried, wondering about confusion is all. So can we get, uh, maybe, can, Mr. Scoble, I, I don't see any of your communications people. Oh, I guess, sorry, I see corporate communications now. But I mean, how would we, how would we get that information out to our businesses and our, and that, okay, just because the province drops their mandatory masks, uh, your, our bylaw is still in effect.
Right, so I mean, we, we still have our COVID team running, which includes Percy and, and, and the number, and our public information officer in that, so you know, we would be uh, ready for that and just have that communicated out that it's a transition. Masks are still in effect, are still required, uh, now under the requirements of the city of St. Albert bylaw. And we have the clarifications on that ready to go, so you know, that we could crank that probably out in, in one to two hours if we got no notice whatsoever.
Okay. And my last question, Madam Mayor, thank you, Mr. Scoble. My last question then would be back to Aaron. Are we seeing a, a, a conflict between the provincial orders and our mask bylaw? So I mean, by sus- by suspend, is it necessary to suspend this? Because I mean, right now the um, mandatory uh, order by the province, excuse my language, trumps the other one um, somewhat. So what can, I don't see the confusion. I don't see the confusion.
Um, we're not seeing a ton of, of concerns, I guess, right now from the officer's perspective, but I think it's a valid point around um, you know, especially when you look at the exemptions that are in place, and there are some differences. You know, as, as we, we've communicated before, that's, they're fairly well-aligned, but there are some differences which could cause some members of the public some, some confusion as to what's actually allowed and what's not allowed. So you know, I guess, you know, from a law enforcement perspective for the officers, I wouldn't say it's imperative or completely hinders our ability to do the job. So if councils chose to keep it in line, having said that, it would be much more streamlined from the officer's perspective to look at one set of rules versus looking at both or understanding both um, at this point in time, and I think it would help with communications as well to the public.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, more questions. Counselor Hughes? And then Counselor Hanson.
If the bylaw was in place and someone were to not wear a mask, would they get fined two thousand dollars or the one hundred dollars?
So at this point in time.
So at this point in time, it would be the officer's discretion at that point where they could potentially do one or the other. They wouldn't do both in this circumstance, but they could choose to issue the $250 fine under the bylaw or the $1,200 fine under the order if they were both in place.
I thought the fine was $100 under the bylaw.
Sorry. Yes, sorry. I apologize for that.
It's okay. So you're saying that if the bylaw were just to stay in place, that the people could be fined potentially $100? And if we suspended, the penalty, the minimum penalty then rise to 1,000?
That's correct.
Okay, the other question, I don't know who it would be to, not to you, Aaron, I believe, is so this recommendation is to say that after the health official says that masks aren't required based on their information, that we are now going to overrule that and then decide making our own medical decisions to keep it going. So would we get a health official or recommendation from the province or something to say that once the province releases our area for mandatory masks, that we should supersede that and keep it going anyway?
What's the actual question, Councillor Hughes?
Who said, who gave the advice to say that after the health official, CMOH says we're no longer requiring masks, and I think they'll be very hesitant to do that since governments seem to never want to give people rights back. So after they said we're going to release it, that the recommendation was that we should actually keep it going and ignore the medical advice? Like, where did we get our medical advice to say that that should be trumping the province's medical decisions?
I would, I would say, Councillor Hughes, that council gave direction to administration to do a, we voted on a mask bylaw, that is the direction. And, you know, we could, we could keep the bylaw in place, or we could let it expire, or we could follow their recommendation. Those are our choices. Would you agree, Mr. Scoble?
Oh, yes, exactly. I mean, you know, again, it's, it's, it's set up that way. I mean, council could even call a special council meeting if it wanted to and have it sooner than the week or two after Mr. Lafar had been mentioning there. I mean, again, that's prerogative of council.
But I did send David an email last week, I think it was, saying it's, it might be confusing to have two different rules, one's a bylaw, one's a provincial health order in place. And my suggestion was to suspend it. So I don't think this was my suggestion, but it seems reasonable that we would put ours on hold, but.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out why we would, because before, the health officers did not say anything about masks, they're just keeping recommended. But if they actually remove that, you would think that we've been then listening to health advice to make these decisions. And I'm just not seeing where we're getting the health advice to state that. I understand we can do something differently, but I'm not seeing the justification for saying that once Dr. Hinshaw says it's okay, that we now have justification to say that it's still not okay.
So prior to the provincial order, it was recommended by Alberta Health to wear masks. Council chose to put that through bylaw. Afterwards, it may still be recommended by the health officer, it may not be recommended by the health officer. That's, that's why the bylaw has been proposed as is, and council has that flexibility at that time. That said, you know, there can always be amendments made to the motion as presented this evening as well.
And I just got one question of curiosity in the background. Or it lists, you found something that supported it, and I went back and reviewed the document and for the Proceedings of National Academy of Sciences. And that study has some pretty serious flaws in that it was reviewed over a very short period of time. It was used an anomaly out of one community everywhere in Germany. And it was masks were put in place during a very strict quarantine and on the downhill part of the curve. So I'm wondering why you did not include any studies that show how masks are ineffective? Because I can give you several if you were looking for them. So what was the decision to not show both sides of this argument?
The information provided was the information provided by the Medical Officer of Health and Alberta Health Services. And those, those were pieces of advice that they provided as credible sources.
Well, they have a lot of flaws in those sources, if you wanted to just check.
Councillor Hughes.
That's not for administration to comment on.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why we weren't showing both sides of the coin.
Because consistently, we have said that we are not medical experts, that we follow advice of Alberta Health, our parent legislator, I guess you'd call it. Thus is their advice. This is the, this is the information that they're sharing us. We can find information on all sides, but that's not Percy's job.
Ironically, though, we're keeping the bylaw against the health, that's medical advice of the province, but, okay.
I'm sure if their advice says that masks are not recommended, we will reconsider our bylaw. But right now, they are recommending it. That is their advice. Any more questions? Councillor Hanson, I'm sorry, you're next for sure.
Thank you. This question is probably going to be for Mr. Lafar. Maybe, maybe Mr. Geisberg, when I look at the comparisons, I was specifically thinking to myself around the face shields. So my question is, if there is no face shield provision within the CMOH, what are the implications to those residents who don't wear face covers but only wear face shields? So if we, you know, if we put ours on hold, what happens to that small group of residents?
So maybe I can take a look at that one. So the way the current CMOH orders are, is it's a broad enough definition of a face covering that it would include a face shield is our current interpretation of that. So it has no bearing on removing the bylaw and the people who wear a face shield.
Okay, it was the one I was worried about because I know that ultimately they don't recommend that because they just can't, they can't control the droplets the same way as a mask can. So, but I'm glad that that doesn't change anything because for the hearing impaired and for those who need to see facial expressions, those are an important part, I think, of our bylaw. What's my other question? That'll be good enough for her right now. Thank you.
All right. More questions? Go ahead, Councillor Mackay.
Yeah, sorry. Percy, in your background, or, I mean, you did identify other surrounding municipalities and how they're handling this. When, did they choose to go suspension as well? Or did they just say, we're just going to keep both our bylaw and follow the provincial mandate?
As far as, as far as I know from the background information that we've gathered, they, they're, in most cases, they are still, still in effect with the, with both.
So just to be clear, so they, either Edmonton, they're maintaining their existing bylaw. Everything that you've identified in the background from all the municipalities, you have no other information that to say that they just suspended their bylaw and tell the orders withdrawn?
We don't have information on suspensions of bylaws at this, at this time.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, I think that's important information to have.
I don't know if maybe some of these extensions were done before the provincial mask mandate came in. That might be why.
Maybe, yeah, but nothing's stopping it. Anyway, I don't want to get, I don't want to get into. I was, mine was just a question of administration, whether or not they had that information, and sounds like they don't. I'm just familiar with some that I've done on my own research, but well, just the ones that I have, well, short of Beaumont, they maintain their bylaws. That I could see, I was just trying to confirm that, Percy. That's all I was trying to do. I didn't see any, I didn't see any of our surrounding metropolitan areas suspend their bylaw. Go this way.
Any more questions? I have a comment. Aaron, I was driving around the other day, and I saw one of your officers outside one of the outdoor rinks, and I stopped and said hi, asked how he was doing mentally. And he said that the outdoor rink situation seems to be improving a bit. So anyway, pass on your thanks to all your officers for, it can't be an easy job.
Thank you very much. I will do.
Okay, Councillor Broadhead? Want to make the motion?
Well, I could make the motion. I was just, what would a, what would amendment to this section, new section 14, look like? If we were to add a section that said that council will review the applicability of this bylaw within by the next council meeting? It just seems to me that it's problematic if, if the, if the province comes to the point and says, province-wide, you don't need to wear a face mask, and we don't respond to that.
I think maybe instead of putting it in the bylaw, we could maybe just add a supplement, a motion at the end? Would that work, David?
Yes, Mayor, Aaron, you took the words out of my mouth. I think that that works better. The provision like that in a bylaw, the problem is, well, let's say council doesn't do it or something intervenes, where does that leave you then? But if you put it in a resolution, then you're clearly saying to yourselves, we're going to do this within whatever period of time you choose after the, after the bylaw kicks back into effect. It gives you, you're tying yourselves to a specific narrow window of time to say, if the province gets rid of their mandatory mask mandate, do we still want to have one here? Perhaps because they're still recommending it provincially, even though they're not mandating it as they did for about six months there. But, but I guess I'm in a long-winded way saying, yes, it makes more sense to put that into a resolution.
Councillor Broadhead, what, I think it's a good idea, and maybe if Tamara could or somebody from Ledge could start crafting up a, what would it be, recommendation number five? That this matter be brought back to council within X number of days? What do you think, Councillor Broadhead?
I would say at the next council meeting.
Next council meeting?
At the next council meeting, post the province rescinding their bylaw. Whatever, Mr. Lafar can certainly come up with something a lot better than I can. But that's the spirit of it, if you don't mind, Mr. Lafar.
I think, yeah, we can do that. We'll work on it here for the next couple of minutes.
Thank you.
I'm just, as a suggestion, if you put a date, like within 14 days, because what if it happens in the middle of the council break? I'm just, it could actually be a long gap in there and
Nice catch, yeah.
Yeah, I sense that.
Okay, 14 days work for you, Wes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's what the majority of other ones have.
Yeah, any more questions? Okay, Wes, if you don't mind, can I turn to you to make the motion?
Absolutely. I recommend that bylaw 44/2020, a bylaw to amend the face coverings bylaw be read a first time.
Awesome. All right, any opening comments?
Well, Madam Mayor, COVID-19 is, we'll be looking back on this 10 years from now and say, I can't believe we got it through it. It'll be probably the event of the first half of the 21st century. And we've heard from people this evening how difficult it is to go through this time. There's differing science, there's differing opinions, there's differing physical constraints that people are under, all of which require grace to be extended from one member of the community to another in order to make it work. Throw into the mix the fact that people are fearful for their very lives, and it makes the whole thing difficult. And our bylaw here is simply to acknowledge that the province has made a statement around mask bylaw wearing, or mask wearing, and they are a higher order of government and their regulations supersede ours. What we're doing here today is to try and structure our local bylaws to sort of conform and, and, and live, I guess, under the, under the higher order regulation, and then give us as a community an opportunity to respond once the province rescinds their order. And that's, that's what we're trying to do here, is just manage our own community in light of our experience here.
All right, anyone else want to jump in on debate?
Sure, I will.
Okay, I'll go, Councillor Hanson, then Councillor Hughes.
Thank you, and I guess I just wanted to say, sort of echo that these are really difficult times, and this is a mask bylaw, whether provincial or local, that, you know, doesn't work for everyone, and we know that. And, you know, we're coming back to what we believe is the greater good of the community in terms of transmission of this disease. But, you know, and we heard that from one speaker today that, from an entrepreneurial point of view, this was an unfair bylaw. But we also know that the Chamber of Commerce in St. Albert supports this bylaw in droves. I mean, they have 800 members, and they have been very grateful to have this, some semblance of a masked bylaw in place. So it is difficult because, you know, there are two sides to this, and we understand that. And, and council has to make a tough decision. But I would also say that when the province does come around, they may not rescind, they may just, they may have trigger points, they may, you know, we don't know how they're going to move with this as, as the, you know, hopefully the curve bends. So I think it's important to align ourselves with the province and make decisions, local decisions, in the best way we can. So I will be supporting this bylaw.
Thank you. Councillor Hughes?
First of all, it'd be better just to keep the bylaw in place and not suspend it. At least then the officers would have an option of $100 or $1,000 fine. And you wouldn't have any elements of confusion, as Councillor Mackay brought up. And considering that it's just going to go right back into place the minute the other one ends, it's, it's not really going anywhere. But the numbers from the masking has increased in Calgary, increased in Edmonton, and increased in St. Albert. As soon as you put the mandatory masks in place, the numbers went up and they stayed up. And they've happened everywhere. And really, the numbers, when they started climbing in all communities, has been with masks. And when you look at communities that don't have masks, actually, the numbers are lower. But the reality is that if we're going to rely on medical advice and follow the province's direction, then we should just follow the province's direction. They put mandatory masks in place. I doubt they will remove them at any type of speed. They are slow to remove any restrictions in the past, so I doubt that they would be removing this any quicker. It would probably be the last things that they relieve. So with that being said, if we're supposed to follow provincial health orders, then we should follow the provincial health orders and let them make decisions on this and stop playing doctor. Because no one here has a medical degree, nobody here is supposed to be playing in the absence of having that. And we haven't even had any medical expertise to tell us that we should be continuing the bylaw after the province is done. So I continue to watch, yes, people are terrified. And the governments have encouraged this in every action that they've made at all levels. And as a result, we have division, we have fear, we have people lashing out, and we have an economy that's just recently had a nuclear bomb put to it from the province. So in the end, what's everything else that's done? The masks are such a small component compared to everybody who can't pay any of their bills anymore. But nonetheless, if we're supposed to follow health orders, But nonetheless, if we're supposed to follow health orders, and that's what we're saying we're doing, the province has stepped up and made this mandatory, so why don't we just follow their directions? And if for some reason afterwards that we receive medical advice that says that we should stop, or we should put one in place in spite of what the CMOH has said, keeping it going without actually having any expertise to justify that is, it's not showing proper respect to how we say we're supposed to be following our protocols. So I won't be supporting this, but I'm sure I'll be the only one.
Anyone else, Counselor Watkins? And then Counselor Mackay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm really kind of saddened by the impact that this mask bylaw has had on our community. You know, I, I'm, I'm kind of saddened by the reactions regarding the masks on both sides. Though those who are in opposition to masks and those who are supportive of masks. You know, it's really kind of polarized our community and its polarized families. There's been many arguments, tears, emotions associated with this issue, you know, and even in my own household, we have division. Within the family on, on both sides of this debate. And, you know, I found that most people are either a believer or they're a denier. And the deniers claim that there's no evidence that the masks help. And that there's some underlying conspiracy to control society and that the government shouldn't mandate their use. And on the other side, you have the believers, they want masks because they believe that they will help slow the virus. Or they are fearful of catching the virus that could end their life. Or that of someone they know or love. And they want government to mandate the use of masks. And then there are those who, I don't know if they're believers or not believers of the effectiveness of masks, but their concerns seem to be more about the issue of governments mandating the use of masks. They're angry that the government is mandating a mask, they feel it's about government control and some hidden agenda to control the people. Well, I have to say that as a visible minority and someone who places a high value on human and civil rights, I can promise you that my decision is not based on trying to control society or limit someone's civil or human rights. I have no secret or hidden agenda to control society and reduce the rights of people. My decisions are based on what I said I think is best for all the people of the city, and what I think is best and what won't overwhelm, hopefully, the healthcare system. Personally, I've received more calls, phones, emails, texts, social media messages, and other articles regarding face coverings in any issue this term. Which tells me that this is an issue of great concern to many. And I'm not a doctor, I'm not an infectious disease expert, I'm not a healthcare worker. And I think the only one of us who has any formal education and work in the field of health is the mayor. So I can only make decisions on what I read and hear and on the research that I do on my own. And I had many in support and many in opposition. And most of the letters I received are from people who aren't experts in the field but are quoting others who supposedly are. And there's no fact checking on all these people that are being quoted, and we're quoting all sorts of experts on all sorts of fields from here to there and far and wide. And, you know, personally, I don't like wearing a mask, but I wear it out of respect for others. And I put up with the minor conveniences that it causes me. Secondly, the issue of whether or not I wear a mask has already been decided at the provincial level, as evidenced by the provincial order issued. So the law that we're suspending is really just echoing what the government is saying for the most part. So I don't know if we really need to suspend this or just kill it right now. You know, I haven't seen any of the bullying people refer to, and I have been in places where people have been without masks. I think that wearing a mask is not an issue for over ninety percent of the people in this city. We have sections of the bylaw to exempt those who can't wear masks for physical or mental reasons. And we have sections in the bylaw to protect those who are being bullied against the mask. I also have to remember that I am here to represent the people of St. Albert, and that we surveyed the public before enacting a mask bylaw. And it was overwhelmingly in support of having a mask bylaw. We also, as Kathy said, the, the Chamber of Commerce was a hundred percent in support of the mask bylaw, and they are all the businesses basically in the city. And finally, I'm supporting a mask bylaw, and like I said, I don't know whether I really support suspending or just killing it, but I do support the wearing of masks, and I do support the bylaw that was passed, because if you look at the Municipal Government Act, section one fifty-three, one, it says, "The councillor's duties are to consider the welfare and interests of the community as a whole." And I think that wearing a mask is trying to consider the welfare and interests of the community as a whole. And though some people may be affected negatively, I think the better interest of the community as a whole is at hand here. And we need to be tolerant, and we need to open our minds and hearts to other people's opinions, concerns, and fears associated with this virus. Whether we share those opinions, concerns, and fears ourselves or not. And we should be more cognizant of that during this holiday season, which is a time of sharing and giving and compassion. So after all that, I don't know whether I'm even supporting suspension or ending of this, I'm just going to wait to hear what everybody else says, but I think we have to be really respectful and tolerant of other people's opinions on this, and I don't think we have today.
All right, thank you, Counselor Watkins, who is next, Counselor Mackay, I think you were next.
Yeah, and I'll be, I'll be quick, great comments, Counselor Watkins, great comments all around so far, and, and I'll keep my comments very, very short because of all the other ones be for me. You could tell by my questions, I guess, my only comment and my only concern would be around the necessity of suspending our existing bylaw, we already know that the province's order can supersede ours, or has, resides above it. And so, I mean, I, I think I will support first reading. But honestly, I, I just don't know where I will reside by the time we get to third reading, because mine is, my concerns reside just primarily in process right now, and that's where I'm going to leave my comments. I do like, other than adding this last one, I do like the, adding the fourteen days, I think that does provide some clarity, and, and, and maybe sways me around supporting it. But I, I honestly don't think we need this at this particular time, but I will support it for, for, for three.
All right, anyone else on debate? All right, Counselor Broadhead to close.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is a recommendation of of our administration. It's up to us to make a decision, and four votes beats three votes, so that's my final comment.
All right, I will call for the vote. All right, that looks like, scrolling, it passes with six in favor. And Counselor Hughes against, all right, Counselor Broadhead, the second reading.
That bylaw forty-four slash twenty twenty be read a second time.
Thank you, anything further to add?
Nothing further at this point, Madam Mayor.
Anyone else? All right, oh, Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Just if, if I can sway anybody, what if we just kept the motion about having reviewed within fourteen days? Then you can always file at that time. You know, like, if you, if you want to have it where you have review right after, you can do that without having this come back as an automatic default, it's going to cause confusion, and it's actually going to be more, even if we kept the bylaw in place. So either other option, keeping it in place, or just saying no reviewing it within fourteen days, would be better than what this solution's being brought forward was today. So I'm just asking, just think about it.
Does that have to be a separate motion or something, can I have a question or clarification of Counselor Hughes's comment?
I think she's asking you to vote this down.
No, but I mean, would that, would her, her comments would be the, require total different amendment then?
No, because the I, I believe that we're doing each bylaw separately, and then that other motion with review is after this.
Right.
Not combined with this, so voting for this does not automatically mean you're voting for the fourteen-day review, Counselor Mackay, it'll be done in a few minutes. These are separate.
Okay, can I get a confirmation, Mr. LaFleur, is that correct?
Procedurally, that's correct, the idea is if, if this amending bylaw is passed today, then we're recommending on your, I guess it was your recommendation, that an additional motion be passed to be sure that no more than fourteen days passes after the bylaw comes back into effect before, you know, administration brings a recommendation with, what do we do now? So council will look at it within no more than fifteen, fourteen days after that.
Okay, thanks, I, I, just for clarity, it wasn't my motion, I support, I agreed with the fourteen days, I think it was Counselor Broadhead's. All right, okay, thank you, that, thank you, I appreciate the clarity.
All right, anything further on second reading? Okay, call for the vote. All right, that is a five to two vote with Counselor Hughes and Counselor Mackay against. I need a motion for unanimous consent, and I'll just point out that if unanimous consent fails, we have no more meetings between now and December thirty-first, when this bylaw would expire, so if this motion fails, I will be calling a special council meeting for today or tomorrow to get third reading done, just so you know. Can I have somebody make a motion on unanimous consent? Counselor Mackay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion, that a unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of bylaw forty-four slash twenty twenty.
All right, thank you for that, can I call for the vote? Oh, we need to clear our previous votes out. There we go, thanks, call for the vote. That one passes unanimously, Counselor Broadhead, third reading.
That bylaw forty-four slash twenty twenty be read a third time.
Anything further?
Nothing further, Madam Mayor.
Seeing no one's hands going up, I'll call for the vote. That one passes five to two, with Counselor Mackay and Counselor Hughes against. All right, utility bylaw.
Oh, Madam Mayor.
Matt, whoa.
Oh, no, and you're, sorry, you're fourteen days, you're fourteen days, go ahead.
Yeah, so.
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. That administration bring to council a recommendation with respect to the face coverings bylaw, not later than fourteen days following the day on which the bylaw comes back into effect as a result of the provincial mask regulations ceasing to be in effect in St. Albert.
Okay. Well written, thank you, Mr. Flar and your team, anything further on that, Counselor Broadhead?
Madam Mayor, this was kind of interesting, because I did have a, a gentleman phoned me about this, and, and quite honestly, it was probably one of the most gracious conversations I've ever had with a resident around the mask covering bylaw. He, he just said to me, he says, please, whatever you do, provide some hope to the municipality so that they recognize that when the necessary rules around wearing the, the mask bylaw, that it won't go on for forever, he says, bring back hope, and he says, just, just tell people that there will be an end. And Madam Mayor, he, he didn't use pejorative commentary, he didn't use hyperbole, he didn't just kept the force of his argument won me over. And, and those are, I love those conversations with our residents, and there are many that we have. But this is the, the, the temptation, I think, when we start talking about this, is, is just to is to use brinkmanship, where, you know, it's either everybody's going to live, or nobody's going to, or everybody's going to die, and it's not that. It's this nuanced, where there's differing opinions, but, but people's lives do stand in the stead. And so we have to respond, but to this guy's point, we need hope, and part of hope is to say, as soon as the province stops, we will take a look to make sure our bylaw aligns in whatever way it needs to align.
Thank you, Counselor Broadhead, anyone else on the, on the fourteen days, Counselor Hughes?
Thank you, I'll be supporting this, I think that it need to be done either way, but I'm I agree that we need to have hope, Counselor Broadhead, I'm just concerned it might be false hope. People thought it was going to end at the end of December, and I realize the province took it over, but then it didn't, it's not going to end, so. I just, I think anybody right now is looking for hope. And I just hope that it actually comes to fruition.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor Jolly, then Counselor Mackay.
Thank you, I'll, I'll preface my comments with how hard I'm going to celebrate when this bylaw is rescinded. That said, I'm, I'm not going to be supporting this motion, really because of what Counselor Hughes just mentioned, is that I, I, I do worry that it it, it will bring a false sense of hope, so what we saw earlier this fall when we enacted this bylaw was that there was a recommendation in place. And no health order to wear masks, and what I suspect will happen is when the health orders are rescinded, the masking recommendations will remain in effect. Everyone's frozen right now, so I'm a little bit worried my internaut's not working.
Oh, you're good, yeah.
That's great. So, so I, I wouldn't want us to have to come here and do this again, when we know that the recommendation is still in place for St. Albert. And Mayor Heron, my expectation is that when it's no longer recommended to wear masks, you will call a special meeting for twenty-four hours in the future, so we can get rid of this thing, because everyone hates it, and, and we're not doing it because we enjoy wearing masks. So you know, i- if this does have to come back to council, and if we do have to make the same vote again, I mean, I, I will absolutely sit here and, and do my part. But I, I, I I am voting against this, that's all, thank you.
Who do I have, Counselor Mackay next, yeah?
Yeah, I'll be quick, I'm going to support it, only because I've always supported having criteria around how we have our existing bylaw, I, whether you call it a trigger, I don't believe it's a trigger in this case, this is just gives us that time period after the province removes its order for us to bring it back, look at whether or not we need to, based on what are the recommendations coming out of the province. And allows us to move forward, whether or not we need to implement our bylaw, or we need to, or pardon me, we need to make some amendments to our bylaw or some modifications. But it gives us, it gives us at least a cri- some criteria to follow, fourteen days. So that, as Wes says, it gives some people hope that, that the end is coming, although when he said it with that hat on, I kind of worried a little bit. Kind of took a little oomph away from it, buddy. But anyways, I, I really, I really think that that was a really strong amendment, something that I can support primarily because it just gives us criteria, it gives us a window to respond, that's why I liked it, so I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Counselor Watkins.
I'm going to support it too. I guess it does give us hope, it's kind of funny that people want government to give us hope, but they don't want government to control us. They want us to give them hope, so I'm kind of up to giving people hope, I think it does say, if we say, if the province removes their requirements, then we're going to make sure we get it back in fourteen days, but I'm also, in kind of Counselor Jolly's mind, I'm hoping that when the government removes this thing that the mayor calls a special meeting within twenty-four hours, and we can get this thing gone and done with, because I'm pretty much sick of it too. So I think I'm going to be supporting the fourteen days, I think it's a good idea, and just on hope, you know, you got to look to yourself to give yourself your own hope, and create your own hope within and within your own family and your group, you can't really look to a bunch of others to give you hope. In the comments.
Yeah, all right, I'll support this, Counselor Broadhead, I think it was a fabulous addition to this topic, just because I think we owe it to the residents to have a conversation, I don't know what the world will look like when the province does relax their mandatory mandate. We still might have high cases in St. Albert. I have no idea what the world would look like at that point. So I think we owe it to residents to have the conversation and not just let it go indefinitely. But you're right, guys, if I ever hear Dr. Hinchell say that masks are not, no longer recommended, I will call council meeting right away. But I don't see that happening anytime soon. All right, call for the vote. And that looks like I've got one, two, three, four, five. Who am I missing here? Oh, it looks like it's passed by majority with just councillor Jolly not in favor. Okay, now we can go on to the utility bylaw. I think this might be pretty quick, and then it will be five if you guys want a quick dinner break. Or, no, we'll figure it out then. Let's do the utility bylaws now. Any presentation on this one? I've got Diane McMorty down as a presenter. Diane, do you have a presentation on this?
Oh, there's no presentation. It'd be just the finalization of the rates.
Right, okay. All right, any questions before I ask for somebody to make the motion? Wow, no questions. Awesome. Okay, go ahead, councillor Mackay.
I'll make the motion is all. If you're asking for me to do that, that bylaw forty three slash twenty twenty be read a first time.
Awesome. Anything to?
No, I, no, it's just about resetting the rates.
Okay. All right, anyone else? See none, call for the vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Second reading, councillor Mackay.
That bylaw forty three slash twenty twenty be read a second time.
Excellent. Call for the vote. Oh wait, we need to. I don't know if they were cleared, or people were just jumping the gun. Anyway. The councillor Watkins and councillor Hughes. There we go. All right, that passes unanimously, unanimous consent from someone? Councillor Watkins, how about you?
Move that bylaw read, we give unanimous consent to read the bylaw a third time.
Thank you. Call for the vote. And that passes unanimously. And third reading, councillor Mackay.
That bylaw forty three slash twenty twenty be read a third and final time, and I do have one comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we draw attention to the fact that the utility budget that we're going to pass today results in an average utility bill decrease of point zero three percent from the prior year. So I wanted to make sure that that was on record.
Thank you for that, councillor Mackay. I think it's always really important when we talk about tax increases, we also look at other municipalities' utility increases or decreases as well, because it's a whole package. So thank you for pointing out, we actually, and I think this is a couple of years in a row, we've had no increases to our utilities, so. Excellent. Thanks for adding that in. Call for the vote. And that passes unanimously. All right, we had the MDP on consent. And that motion read as follows. That bylaw twenty slash two thousand twenty being a bylaw to adopt a municipal development plan be read for a first time. That bylaw twenty slash two thousand twenty be referred to the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board for approval. And finally, that administration is directed to propose to council a date and time for a public hearing on bylaw twenty slash two thousand twenty during the first or second quarter of twenty-one after the date of the anticipated approval decision of the EMRB is known. All right. Passed on consent. All right, I was going to say we power through, but then I realized we actually have the, a couple of council motions that might take some time, so why don't we, if you guys want a full dinner break? Or just a ten-minute break? Ten minute? Okay, ten-minute break. It's four fifty-two, so how about when we make it five oh five? It'll be a little bit more than ten minutes. And then we'll be back and we'll power through to the end, and then you can have a long relaxing dinner. Okay, so see you at five oh five. All right, we're back.
Oh, your eyeglasses. I thought you meant your wine glasses.
Know me too well, councillor Mackay. Eight point four. The master rates bylaw, so due to a little oops, we had to bring this back again. So Adrian, do you have anything to add? You have a presentation?
No presentation. It was just an oversight on my part.
It's a big deal. All right, can I have a hand, or should I just pick on somebody bringing first reading? Did anyone have any questions? Sorry. Councillor Hanson, do you have a question? You're willing to do first reading? Go for it.
That bylaw forty six twenty twenty being a bylaw to amend the master rates and bylaws fee be read a first time.
Awesome. Any comments?
No, Adrian, everybody's entitled to a mistake. I'm just teasing you.
All right, I'm going to call for the vote. That looks, waiting for Ray. There we go. Passes unanimously. Second reading, councillor Hanson.
That bylaw forty six twenty twenty be read a second time.
Thank you. Call for the vote. That passes unanimously. Can I have unanimous consent from someone? Councillor Hughes, thank you.
Unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of bylaw forty six slash twenty twenty.
Awesome. Call for the vote. That passes. That passes unanimously, so we can go on to third reading. Councilor Hanson, go ahead.
That by law 462020 be read a third time. That was easy, Adrian.
Call for the vote. Counselor Hughes almost said no, but I think we're good with the unanimous one. All right, that's done, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that, everyone. We are now on to number nine. There were no emergent items. Council civic and external agencies was passed on consent. Council Watkins, yours wasn't in. Do you want to just? Do you have any? I'll give you the opportunity to give an update if you want. You're muted.
Yeah, I sent it in. It was late. I thought it was attached. I'm giving the update. That's okay.
Why don't we just get included in next month's package?
In the announcement.
Okay. All right, council motion. So keep yourself unmuted, Councilor Watkins, because the first one is yours. Energy Corporation feasibility report. Why don't you just read the motion and then we'll open it up for questions?
Wait one for a second. Just got to get on that page again. Sorry.
Yep, that's good. Page 524 of the package.
Okay, the proposed motion that by June 30th. Am I muted still? Okay, hang on. Am I muted?
You're good. You're good.
30th, 2021. We can hear you. Sorry. Yep.
Administration provide a feasibility report including recommendations for council to consider next steps in establishing an energy corporation as a means to generate new revenue to offset declining traditional sources of revenue. The feasibility report is to include at minimum an evaluation of net income projections, the suite of potential energy generation and marketing opportunities focusing on green energy with the objective of carbon neutral or carbon credit generating operations, financing methods available to raise capital independently of the city of St. Albert so as to not to impact taxes, rates, or debt, opportunities to work collaboratively with regional partners and the private sector, integration opportunities with regulated utilities in new developments and/or offsetting of costs associated with traditional off-site infrastructure development methods and the required processes, decisions, gates, off-ranch timelines, and cost to establish the energy corporation. Let the feasibility report be prepared in conjunction with or as a component of the operational and fiscal review being conducted by Ernst &amp; Young. If project budget and schedule permit and that if additional funds beyond the funds previously allocated for the operational and fiscal review are needed to support the feasibility report as adjunct or to or and as an adjunct to or an component of the operational and fiscal review, then additional funds be provided for this purpose to a maximum of $75,000 drawn from the stabilization reserve.
All right, before I accept that, I'll open it up for questions of either Council Watkins or administration, I guess. Councilor Hughes, is that your hand up? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So it says that project budget and schedule permit. So what if the budget and schedule doesn't permit?
Got a question for Councilor Watkins?
Anybody wants to answer it?
Yeah, so that's right. That's what the scope of work did say. And we were tracking the cost of the study with Ernst &amp; Young. There's not a lot left over in that report, but between that and up to $75,000, we can get the work done for that. We've been in discussion with Ernst &amp; Young if this passes about how we would tackle it, and it will actually be a bit of a partnership. A lot of the heavy lifting will be done with some of the resources that we have in-house such as research and that with our our intern and things like that. So it's going to be kind of a dual effort, I guess, to keep the cost down as much as possible and make sure within the money approved by council.
So to do this, I'm still kind of unclear about what the report would come out, what a feasible report looks like in the end. So what details would we actually have included in a feasibility report?
Well, at minimum, it will require it will include the four categories outlining in Council Watkins. Notice the motion there. And then I think it's pretty inclusive from what I saw, but if there's anything else that should be included in the report that we can fit in, we will.
I guess, how would it differ from the business plan that was presented a year ago?
Well, well, first of all, I don't want to compare it to the business plan from last year. This is an entirely different offering, but we originally did a feasibility report too with the utility corp. There was an initial report and then there was proceeding to the business plan. So this is probably a little more fulsome and inclusive than the feasibility report from that project, but it's not a full business case either. So it's kind of in between.
Because I'm just thinking of, for doing net income projections, we have to be able to know what the costs are and what the revenue expectations are. So are we going to be getting details in this nature or?
I'm going to be very clear. It's going to be at the same level as the business plan to the utility corp or less. It's a feasibility report, and that was a preliminary business plan for the utility corp. So this will be at best as much information as the preliminary business plan. And from there, there would probably be a recommendation account of administration if there looks to be feasibility. The June 30th report, we recommend preparing a detailed business case, which is the expectation of St. Albert that we heard clearly last time.
Okay. When was the, I'm not questioning it. I just don't remember. When was the feasibility report done for the last one? Just so I can look it up, because I don't remember when it was presented to council.
Actually, it would be a year, 18 months prior, I think, something like that. I don't.
Is it possible?
Okay, I think Kate.
Could you just email it? Hi, Kate. Could you email it to us? Just, I don't remember what it looks like anymore. I just, I don't remember. That's all. Just so I can see that.
Yeah, I'll have to go looking for it and I'll send it out through Kevin.
Okay, that'd be awesome. Okay, this is to have it, why are we not putting this out to RFP and getting and looking for an independent firm? Why are we just doing a scope change directly with the one firm?
I don't think it's a scope change. It's within scope if the budget permits and time permits. And like I said, there might not be a lot of money left, but Ernst &amp; Young has indicated they can do it. And there's that natural synergy there in that they're very familiar with our operations and they've already done an intensive review. You know, of the utilities department as part of the overall review and some of the initiatives that we're working on in solid waste and that. So I think you gain efficiency on this versus moving to the market.
So I'm assuming that this would include the solar panels that we are moving forward with right now? And would it also include the waste of energy or not? Because I don't know what green energy, how narrow it is.
Well, yes, those would probably be in it and other things that we're looking at.
Okay, so the next steps would be there's the feasibility report that would come forward. And then let's assume that that proceeds. The next step you said would be a business plan. So what will we link up the timeline to do the business plan? From after June 30th, like how long?
Yeah, so we'd have to see, but again, the intent is it'll be between a feasibility report and the business plan. So, you know, anywhere from six to 12 months.
Okay.
Depending on.
So this would really be
All right.
This would be a decision for the next council then?
Most likely.
This would be a decision for the next council?
Most likely, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all for questions. Thank you.
Was it Grant Thornton that did the, it was Grant Thornton's report that we looked at last year, right? Yeah. So the Grant Thornton report was essentially was a feasibility report?
No, it was a preliminary business case.
It was, okay. And so we had another one before that on the feasibility?
Yes, Kate, maybe you want to speak a little bit to it. It was a white paper and some preliminary feasibility work. But Kate, maybe you could speak to that in a little more detail. She was the.
Yeah, between, between, I guess, myself and one of our predecessors in economic development, work was done examining the feasibility of doing some of the work from a utility perspective, from a utility corp side of things.
And then so I was the preliminary business case that Grant Thornton did, and then the motion that failed was the detailed business case?
Correct.
Okay, so this would be a little bit more robust than the white paper Kate just referred to, but not as robust as the Grant Thornton report. Okay. Other questions? Councilor McKay.
Yeah, I'll be quick because Councilor Hughes asked some of my questions. I guess maybe Mr. Scoble. So because you've been working more closely with the operational review, was this at all what, and there might be an impossible question to answer at this particular time because you don't have all the information. But was, was this perhaps a direction that Ernst &amp; Young was already identifying? Are we leading them in more into this vein? Do you follow that question?
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't know. You'd have, like, I mean, it's not led by administration. It's a notice of motion from Councilor.
Yeah, no, and that's what I mean, not by administration, but I agree. I take your point, and that's a good point. But my, my, my question is around, so Ernst &amp; Young is doing the operational and fiscal review right now. Was this, do you know from any of their preliminary work with administration, was this a direction we were looking at going? Already?
I believe so. Yeah, I mean, I think they're familiar with the utility corp plan that was put forward. And, you know, I think we checked the backgrounder with them to make sure they were, they're comfortable with that statement in the AR there about finding new sources of revenue.
So, so this could have been on, this could have been one of their recommendations in their phase two report?
Well, they've had discussions with administration, myself included. And, you know, again, you know, I don't want to repeat last year's presentation, but municipality has limited sources of revenues available. We have taxation, we have utilities fees, we have penalties, fines, and we have funding from other levels of government. There's not a lot else available. One thing that is available under the municipal government act is a municipal controlled corporation, which knows what would be looked at here with an energy corp. The scope is different. It's energy this time and energy only. But again, there's, there's, without counting them up, there's six or seven things we can do, and we're doing all but one of them currently, and grants are declining. And so in the absence of new sources, you'll have to look at taxation increases.
But in relation to the motion, administration isn't concerned that the two, four, the six bullet points identified in the motion, that doesn't limit you. I know it says at minimum an evaluation of, but potentially Ernst &amp; Young could go outside of that?
They could within budget on the project, though, right?
Right. All right. Okay. I, yeah. Okay. Thanks. That's just my question for clarification around. Around this.
Councilor Hanson.
Thanks. And so I found the backgrounder to be very interesting and touched on the way COVID-19 has kind of changed the world and especially in the province of Alberta. Our energy industry has suffered obviously a lot through this past year. This feasibility study is going to concentrate on, Kevin, you said, energy more than utility. And I just, I wonder if you could just, for the benefit of people listening in, talk about some of those options. What, what do we mean by energy and what kinds of projects? I mean, solar and other things, but maybe elaborate.
Well, the solar farm's been before, before council, and the waste of energy is there, but there's numerous other sources. There's geothermal opportunities available locally, which is, you know, something that is related to the oil industry that there's been a lot of talk about. And there's certainly heat recovery from sewer systems. That's commonly being used as a source of energy now. You know, we, I think it's mentioned in the AR, there's, there's the opportunity for hydrogen, which supports the energy industry. We've been, you know, having some discussions with Sturgeon about how we can support that and be a part of that. So that's always an opportunity. So we're trying to find as many, you know, the more energy sources, the better. It's not focused on one, right? And if you can, more, like I said, the more, the more energy, the better, right? I mean, we're looking at production opportunities, energy production opportunities and marketing opportunities as well, or some of those that are available that some municipalities in Alberta have chosen to take advantage of. So that's, that's an emergent one that we're looking at currently.
So if the feasibility study came back as being something that the next council might want to invest in, it's going, the scope will, the scope will be green energy. Or might it touch more traditional forms of energy? Or is that part of the study?
I'm not so much on traditional, not to say it won't, but it could, I guess. You know, I might defer to Kate if she's looking at any opportunities there. But at this point, you know, traditional energy is pretty wrapped up in St. Albert with existing natural gas servicing and that.
You could also look at like co-gen opportunities. That's pretty emergent for some of our facilities, and you could partner with like third-party investors to do co-gen. The other opportunity you could look at is doing a really intense look at our existing facilities and do energy modifications to reduce operating. So again, if there were big capital investments, you could do that outside of the, outside of the city framework. So not just kind of energy generation, but energy savings and sort of manage it in those pieces. So again, big blanket of energy, but doing it in different ways.
Another one we're looking at, it just emerged, is it's a variation of solar. It's a project in Calgary between the city of Calgary and the Renfrew Community Association. And they're going to put a solar array in the Teles Park Center in Calgary. So there's these emergent opportunities where municipalities and other partners get together on those projects as well.
Yeah, and I think that's what, and I won't take over the conversation, but what I keep thinking about as we have this conversation, when we're asking questions, is that partnerships is going to be very key in, in this and maybe some regionalization work and, and things like that.
I would dare say partnerships, private and with other regional partners, would be fundamental to this, actually.
Okay, my other questions were answered. So thank you.
Awesome. Okay, I think I saw Ray put his hand up. You just muted yourself.
Okay, there?
Yep, we're good.
I was going to say on my motion, the big difference between this and what was proposed before is that before we were looking at starting a municipal utility corporation, and that would look at our water, our wastewater and our stormwater, our conventional utilities. And this was going to open the door for moving these existing utilities over into that corporation and into the new utility corporation. And there was a lot of concerns about what had happened in Chestermere and things and that are associated with doing that. This proposal will not, and I'm going to, will not, deal with our existing conventional water, wastewater and stormwater and its movement into a municipal utility corporation. That's not what I'm looking at here. We're looking at unconventional methods of municipal servicing, maybe, that could be implemented in new areas as a pilot project, but mostly the emphasis on here will be green energy. And as Kevin talked about, solar, hydrogen, things such as that.
Thank you for that clarification. Awesome. Questions? Okay, seeing no more. Go ahead, Councilor Hughes.
Just a quick, just because I have some top of my head. How are we on the waste energy pilot? Are we close to getting it? Moving or no?
Pretty much everything in place, as I understand. I'll let Kate elaborate. We're just waiting on grants. But I understand pretty much everything else is in place.
That's correct, Kevin. Yeah, so we're just waiting on hearing hopefully from some grants. Obviously during COVID, things have just taken a little bit longer to get grant funding as retained. But we are connecting with some private partnerships to see if we can fast track some of the financial sharing.
So when do we think we'll start it then?
It's kind of just about money. So it'd be hard to predict that until I have an understanding of when federal funding is going to come out from Ottawa.
Okay, thanks.
All right, go ahead, Councilor McKay.
Just a quick follow-up question, just focusing on the net income projections and something you said earlier, Mr. Scoble. So I mean, I think one of the challenges we had with the Grant Thornton business case slash feasibility study was this, maybe there was, at least certainly for myself and maybe for other members of the public and, and council, there was a real lack of in-depth income projections or which created a lot of confusion over some of the issues. And I realized that the next steps was to flesh that out a little bit more. Are we? Are we? Will this motion allow us? Will this will this will this actually allow us to have some more? More information around what the projected income projections would be? Or or is that just creating confusion by adding that in there or limitations?
Well, I think you raise a very good point there, Counselor McKay, like we'll do income projections, but there will be entirely estimates, right? Whereas with the utility, sorry, with the utility corp, you had water and wastewater actuals, right? Because we have that data, so. It will be projected incomes.
So I mean, we, yeah, so I mean, we're really, we could be really. Plus or minus 50%. We could be some really wild numbers, really. I mean, and that's my words, not yours, I apologize. But I mean, I mean, when you put income projections based on on unknowns. I'm just worried that you're you're creating another we're creating another situation where we're going to have. A lot of comment in relation to. These income projections and you're you're just we're. That's that's one of my biggest concerns. So I guess there's no question there. That's just a recognition and maybe Ray or somebody else can address.
Fair, but we will be as conservative as possible. We were conservative in in the last business case as well, will be conservative here. You know, you do have Ernst &amp; Young that's can can help us. And you've got a couple of engineers that have actually done some of this kind of stuff, too.
Yeah, no, I'm nobody's doubting their expertise or or our own engineers as well. I mean. I'm just worried that we'll get into the same discussions as we did when we had this whole discussion previously. So. Anyways, I'll end it at that, Mayor.
Okay. All right, I see no more questions. So Counselor Watkins, I'm going to accept your motion and let you have some opening comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'm going to save most of my comments till the end there because they're quite extensive, so I'll just leave until the end. I think the report is quite well written and lays out a lot of. The points and arguments in favor of going ahead with the proposal.
All right, thank you for that. Anyone else on debate? Wow. Oh, Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just I feel like the public has been very clear about their position on doing an MUC regardless of the energy source. And. The concern I have is that many of the items that were brought forward, such as. Savings in the city or even the solar panels can be done without creating an MUC. So the problem is it's a duplication of staff and resources that you have to then compensate for in addition to the revenue that you're projecting to make. Just to break even. So I still maintain that we should see how the solar panels actually perform, see what the results are. And and even then. Really just evaluate whether or not. It's actually generally the revenue is projected to generate and if it needs to actually be through an MUC. Because if any of these can be done without an MUC, then you're putting money into something that's not necessary. So personally, I just feel uncomfortable going down this rabbit hole again. That's it.
Anyone else?
Ray, I will be supporting your motion. I think. I think it's creative to to try to find. New ways to generate revenue. We heard it. From our government. What do we what do we call Catholicist when she spoke to us about some of the? You know, the challenges out in front of us. You know, the the province has actually been really encouraging these kind of municipally controlled corporations to be developed. They've changed legislation to make it easier because they have said very clearly and loudly that we can't continue to go to the province. We have to come up with our own ideas. Generating revenue and that cannot include raising taxes. That that is the message we're hearing. So Ray, I think this is a creative way. And I think when the solar panels came forward. You know, I was supportive of that, but I was very. Worried that when the decision actually came to take on $10 million worth of debt in the first phase and then another 10 and another 10. Eventually that council would be shy of that because then. You've got a capital project competing with other needs in the city such as rec centers, et cetera. And if it was in a municipally controlled corporation, that that competition wouldn't be there and we could take the debt away. So I I think this is. Very responsible governance type motion raised, so happy to support it. I'll let you close. Oh, Counselor McKay, I'm so sorry.
No, I apologize. I your commentary is a point and I'll I'll also I'm I'm. Fifty fifty on this and I'll wait for Counselor Watkins to close, but I appreciate your comments as well on this one. But. My worry is still around again somewhat around the process because I I think that. I would hope that Ernst &amp; Young would maybe come forward with this on their own as part of a recommendation. But I take also Mr. Scoble's other comment in my one question in the sense that Ernst &amp; Young has the capacity combined with some of the bench strength that we have currently within our administration. To work to work through some of this. And I mean, and I realize that I guess the outcome of this might be. Just greater information for the next council to move forward with any of the recommendations. So. That's kind of where I am right now. I mean, I realize that I think the strength perhaps of this motion is is that we will get more detailed information that I think was really lacking. In the previous MUC and I don't want to compare the two, Ray, but I think that a lot of people will. But I think that I think that that's giving me some. Comfort in the sense that Ernst &amp; Young will come back with. Some of the questions that I don't believe were answered in the in the first discussion we had. But saying that, I'm a little worried that we're kind of out of step. I think we've got that and I've used this term before. We've got the kind of the ready, fire, aim approach. And I think that we've engaged Ernst &amp; Young to come back with some pretty detailed review material. And I I I believe that this. As what we've we've kind of. Provided them should have been something they came back to us with anyways. So I'm I'm kind of caught in between right now and I just wanted to let you know that Counselor Watkins.
All right, Counselor Hanson.
Yeah, sorry to go after you as Chair Mayor, but yeah, it's sort of some things that you brought up. And I guess this, I mean, there's no question that. As a municipality, we have to address long term fiscal sustainability, crumbling infrastructure, all of that. You know, grants decreasing. But what I didn't hear, and this is a different report, but what I didn't hear last time. Was I don't think I don't feel like our residents didn't have an understanding of what we were trying to achieve. And and it was really the reason why I voted against it. I just wasn't hearing enough support. So I'm really hoping that what comes forward in this feasibility study. Will answer some of those basic questions around why some of these projects need to go through. A corporation and why they can't be standalone. And that would be one of those big questions that I'd be asking. Myself, while I was trying to make a decision on whether or not to ultimately support something like this. But at this time, I'm going to support the study, but I am looking for that level of detail.
All right. Now you can close, Counselor Watkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'll just address some of the council's concerns first. Counselor Hughes said that this she doesn't this is she doesn't support a duplication of staff and resources. Let's not go down that rabbit hole. This is not a duplication of staff and resources. This is a study to look at if we should be doing this. So we're not adding any resources, we're not any adding any additional staff now. With respect to municipal utility corporation. It's much easier for a business to do business with another business than to do business with a municipality. A municipal, a municipal energy corporation can move a lot quicker, it has less restrictions. Then put on the city. So if we're trying to do these projects through the city, it's going to be a lot slower, it's going to be a lot more cumbersome. Secondly, a municipal utility corporation. Allows for liability from the city. So if that corporation. Is standalone and if if it if if it, I know people, this is this is what the headlines will be if it goes bankrupt. People say, yes, it goes bankrupt, it goes bankrupt and there's liabilities. Those liabilities don't come back to the city, it's a standalone corporation. So that's the one benefit. Another benefit is that if it borrows money and incurs debt, that debt isn't included in the city's debt calculation. It can it's completely standalone. So if if our debt calculation by municipal government is X dollars and then and then we go borrow $10 million or $30 million to do a. Solar farm within the city, that's counted against our debt. If we have it in a municipal energy corporation, it is not counted in that. Counselor McKay said maybe we should wait for the Ernst &amp; Young study. I'm going to tell you that we can't wait any longer. Funds are drying up. We've been almost will be four years into this term, almost to the end of our term. And also we're going to have is a study talking about a municipal utility corporation. So I don't really think we can afford to wait any longer. We have a. Money problem. We have a long term sustainability problem as evidenced by our 250 mix 56 million dollar deficit alone in our 10 year capital plan. And yes, you heard me right, 256 million dollar deficit in our 10 year capital plan. You look at repair, maintenance and replacement, it's also of great concern. Costs are increasing yearly. We can see how much we are spending on RMR alone in this 2021 budget. And I think it was $42 million on RMR alone. And these costs are going up and up and up. And we are not keeping up with the rate at which they are increasing. We committed to put more money aside for RMR and we reduced it this year due to COVID and its impacts. So on RMR, we aren't even treading water, we're slowly sinking to the bottom. And we better throw out a life preserver because this is a time bomb waiting to hit our city's finances and ultimately the taxpayer. Decreasing funding from other sources of government, you heard that. No one can argue that this isn't a reality moving forward. Any government funding that we have seen lately seems to be associated with COVID stimulus. And then we have council and a public that want tax increases at zero. They don't want franchise fees. Which we know without them taxes would have been higher this year. We did a survey on service levels and through our internet world cafes and citizens all said they want their streets plowed just as regular as they were before. They still want their parks, their trails and their open space maintained at the same level. They want new facilities, they want more parks, they want another rec center, they want a swimming pool, more social services, additional grants to help or support arts and social agencies. Increased brown bid pickup and on and on. So it doesn't seem like we're going to save money by reducing services. At least that's what the citizens are telling us. From an operational and fiscal point of view, we are doing a good job. And I think we're doing a really good job and that's evidenced by the report card just released this week by the provincial government. Which showed our operating expenses per capita are below the provincial average for comparable cities such as Airtree, Medicine Hat and Lethbridge. So I think you have to look at this and say, we're probably doing, excuse me, we're probably doing a pretty good job on the operation fiscal size, at least compared to other cities our size. So in summary. We have a long term sustainability problem as evidenced by our 256 million dollar deficit. We have decreased government spending. We have a ballooning RMR repair, maintenance and replacement budget, which in 2021 alone is 42 million. We have a public that doesn't want to decrease. Service levels, we have increasing demands from the socials, from social agencies, the arts and sports groups. And we currently have our social, our fiscal and operational house in pretty good order and we're still looking at that right now with this fiscal review. So to address the deficit, we need new revenue. And new revenue is going to come from non residential growth. And non traditional revenues revenue sources. On the non residential growth side, I think council has done a pretty good job over the last three years. To try to encourage increasing revenue. And we've had, we've we're getting close to accomplishing annexation. We've twin Ray given drive, we're looking at servicing the Range Row 260 lands. We have an MDP that's focused on 6040. So I think on the non residential growth side, we're doing pretty much all we can as a municipality. So this proposal is to explore the feasibility of a new non traditional revenue source for the city. And as once again, I said, it's a municipal energy corporation. And once again, I want to say the big difference here is that this proposal before you is that we were. We're looking at starting a municipal, we before we were looking at starting a municipal utility corporation. That would look at water, wastewater and storm sewer. And this opened the door to moving our existing utility operations over into a new utility corporation. And everybody was concerned, oh, we're taking our people and putting them over into a new utility corporation. We're moving around, we're shuffling all these things, why are we doing all this? This new proposal will not, and I repeat, will not. Deal with our existing conventional water wastewater and stormwater. And its movement into a municipal utility corporation. That's not what we're looking at here. But what we are looking at is unconventional methods of servicing that could be implemented in new areas or as pilot projects. But mostly the emphasis will be on green energy. We want to look at hydrogen to support our energy sector. Solar projects, wind, whatever we can look at that's green and could possibly generate us carbon credits or things such as that. You may ask why the MEC, why the city doesn't just partner up with businesses to conduct these? And as I said before, there are benefits of an MEC. Any liability associated with the business is not on the hands of the taxpayers. Since this is an armed linked standalone corporation, if it incurs any debt, that debt doesn't count towards the legislated maximum debt levels that municipalities have placed upon them. And the motion, if you look at the motion. Usually before you start a business, you do what's called due diligence. And this is basically due diligence. And duly due diligence is homework and research to make sure that it's going to work or to hope that it's going to work and to flesh out any potential problems. So if you look at the motion and you look at the things we've asked to look at. That is a list of things that I hope will answer the questions to whether we should be moving forward with this or not and whether it is a money making venture. Now, there were concerns expressed about. Revenues, while the projected revenues are only as good as the consultant you got preparing the report. And we have a pretty good consultant here in this case. And and there are levels of efficiencies because we've been working with this consultant for a while on these issues. So what I'm asking for in the end here is 75 grand if needed. The budget we just passed was a quarter of a billion dollars, just under a quarter of a billion dollars utility and and municipal operating. $75,000 is a very small amount of money to spend on what I said is due diligence. Homework and study. To see if we can find another way to make our municipality money. So that we don't have to slap the extra cost on the taxpayer in the end here. And as I told you before, and as you can see, nobody wants additional tax increase, everybody wants the levels of services the same. There's all sorts of existing things, we're running out of other sources, where are we going to go from here? So to be clear. I'm not asking you to support. The establishment of an MEC today. I'm just asking you to support a study to see if we should do this. And I think I should also draw attention that you had at the beginning of this meeting, which I didn't even know about, I was quite surprised that ESAB showed up. And those are our economic. People of our community that we say are the experts. On how to keep us going. And they said they're unanimous support to moving forward with this. Unanimous support. In favor of a feasibility study. So. And just on a final note, I just looked and I saw EPCOR, you know, EPCOR, that's a municipal utility corporation. They in 2019. They had $231 million in revenue. That's a pretty good number. So I'm asking for you to support this motion today. And I hope that in the end, what will come out of it is something positive that will help. Reduce tax burden on the residential taxpayers and actually, well, it's actually all taxpayers in the city of St. Albert. So with that, I I ask you that you support this motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, I was muted, call for the vote. So that motion passes six to one with everyone in favor except Counselor Hughes. All right, next on the agenda is a motion from myself. So I think Counselor Hughes, you are deputy mayor. All right, passing the chair over to you.
Okay, great. Do you want to read it into the record before I accept it?
I think I need to do the waving of notice. So I'll say that the twenty-one B advanced notice period for consideration of a council member motion be waived for the, aforesaid motions in accordance to a section twenty-three point eight of procedure bylaw, and that the motions be debated by council at the scheduled council meeting on December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Does anybody have anything they want to say on that? I'll call for the vote. And that passes unanimously. So go ahead.
Thanks, guys. All right. Who's talking? No, okay. All right, I'll read the motion. Okay, so the the following items be approved for funding through the stabilization reserve. Number one, eight thousand to construct a small freeway loop in Lyons Park for the two thousand and twenty twenty-one winter season. Number two, that thirty-four thousand dollars be used to construct a small freeway loop in Rotary Park for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two winter season. And that eleven thousand dollars be used to hire a consultant who is certified in ice structures on natural ice surfaces to assist the city to design and implement skating on the Sturgeon River in two thousand and twenty-two. In addition, the associated business case for whatever construction and operating costs are required for skating on the river presented to council during the two thousand and twenty-two budget deliberations. And that's it.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions? I have a couple. So, okay, so what I was concerned about was when it talks about the potential for the the flooding in the spring, I'm thinking just going forward a few months. I'm not sure who I need to talk to, if it's Kate, I just see you face Kate, so I'm just like, yeah, maybe it's you. But how much potential landscaping damage can we be doing if we do this?
I don't know if that's Kate or Danielle.
I, I know that, thanks for that question, Counselor Hughes, I know that public works, so Louise and Antonia are here as well to speak to this as well. There has been some flooding in both of our parks, they retain a little bit of water, so it's just a cognizance, I think that putting more water in that part could cause some additional water buildup. I know that Ms. Polkowski had suggested that we could do some pumping out on some of the sites to reduce that risk a little bit, so that could certainly help, but maybe like have additional ads for that, I'm not sure.
So basically, you're telling me that we can, I don't know who, hi Louise. If you have anything you need to add.
I, no, I mean, the, the water, if you keep the water on the grass, it'll obviously choke it out in the spring when it's trying to, trying to come back. So the quicker we can move the water, the quicker the landscape will recover. It'll also be a matter of use, it's a heavily used area at Lyons Park as well. So if we can keep people off it and get it to recover very quickly, we may need to fence sections of it off. But there was some drainage work done in the past and and we'll really put it to a test this spring. But whatever damage is there, yes, we may have to limit access and we'll repair it as needed.
And then three seven thousand dollars included for land, or is that like I'm just saying that one for the large freeway loop right now on my, on my screen. So is the landscaping cost potential damage included in our costs or are the estimates exclusive of that?
I'll, I'll take that one, that the estimate is, is exclusive of that. So that is based on a square meter cost that we have to build and maintain ice throughout the winter season. So the landscaping repair, we're assuming that it will not be extensive and we'll be able to handle that operationally. We will know better in the spring and the early summer as that area recovers. And if so, then we may need to come forward with an additional ask for dollars, but right now we're thinking we can handle that in-house.
Okay, so hopefully that will be the total cost on that. The other question I had, that some of the concerns were about like congestion and apparently at this moment at least, we can still have thirty-seven people in ice rinks. What would, would there be thirty-seven on all of these or how many people could even use it at a time?
I can speak to some of the abilities that we've created calculations. So the province issued some guidance on outdoor recreation on Friday, and we've done some calculations on our outdoor ice surfaces, as you're aware. On our outdoor border rinks, we have calculated capacity based on the province's guidance of thirty-seven people per outdoor ice, border ice surface. We have applied the same philosophy to our socialized surfaces to come up with some calculations and numbers, and we would do the same on this type of ice surface created by square meter and flow of traffic. So we would use the same kind of calculations in theory to come up with those numbers and give a capacity on that space.
So what do we think the capacity would be then? Like-ish, like I'm just like, I look at like the Lyons Park or the smaller Rotary Park and like, because there's not a lot of square meters on it because the middle's not ice, right? So you lose square footage when you're trying to do calculations. And so, but I'm, I'm thinking like
It's approximately thirty-two square meters per person. So just based on that calculation for the thousand thousand meters of freeway, you'd be looking at about, correct me if I'm wrong, their math is not great, thirty-ish people to be on that kind of space. On the freeway space, you'd be looking at thirty, thirty meters per person, approximately thirty-two square meters per person.
Okay, so thirty-two-ish on number one and number two, and number three is a bit bigger, so you're probably looking at about forty-five people?
Give or take, and also you have to consider that those are the current restrictions, as they change, we would just revise accordingly. So if there are no restrictions in two thousand and twenty-two, we wouldn't be bound by any kind of guidance on that at that time.
Okay, I, I have this is, I'm thinking it's not to a rent, it's obviously a track. And the issue also is some of them don't have water access. So is that why the Rotary Park large freeway loop is so much more expensive? Is because there is no water access to it?
That is correct, we would have to bring in a third party to bring in a water truck and help us flood that on a consistent basis. So that cost is factored in.
Okay. I think that's all of my questions, anybody else have any questions? Counselor Mackay, and then Counselor Hanson, yeah, Counselor Hanson.
Okay, thanks, I'll be quick. It says in here that regardless, they both could be started up in January twenty twenty-one until weather permits March, let's hope March, please, let's hope March. But is, and so where, like it would happen like almost immediately then if in, in January, once administration and and the second question follow-up, I don't know, Mr. Scobal, do we have, is there a lot of administration time to to, to do this based on our staffing issues we have currently with COVID?
I can answer in regards to if we do get the go-ahead tonight for regardless of which option, our intent would be to actually start that fairly quickly. So the same crew that floods the ice rinks now and is maintaining the ice rinks is also supported by the arena staff that are not currently working in the arenas. So they are also the crew that does the shoveling on the priority one area. So if we had a significant snowfall, their priority would be the snow, but outside of that, their priority is the ice rinks. And so given that we don't have any winter storms, then they would start to compact the snow and begin flooding. We do have some people that will be taking some vacation between Christmas and New Year's. So we may be a little short-staffed in there, but we, we anticipate that each one will take about ten days to get fully serviceable for the public.
Okay, thank you for that, Louise, I appreciate that. And Madam Mayor, the, your motion would have the Rotary Park moving into the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, so that could provide additional planning timeframe, correct? All right, otherwise I was thinking of maybe splitting it, but I'll, I'll think, all right.
Counselor Hanson, go ahead.
Thank you. Couple of questions. If you went for the small, if, if we went for the small Rotary Park, is that sort of a done deal or could you actually long-term put a wider rink around the smaller rink or is if we go with a small Rotary rink, that's kind of a done deal? And is this year to year? That's the other question I have. Are these costs every year or once you get the breezeway made, it's just a matter of filling it?
So I'll start with that, Danielle. So the, the actual design, I think, will be modified when we actually do a field fit as to what is, is best in terms of slope and water coverage. But this is an annual cost because every year we'll have to go in and repack the snow. So ideally in the summer, you wouldn't even know it was there if the landscape recovers properly. And then every year we could conceivably do a slightly different design, different cross paths, you know, depending on what the desire and how well this goes with the public this year.
Okay, consideration I'd answer to that or add to that, Counselor Hanson, is that we just have to watch slope on the sites because you can't skate up a freeway hills and such. So there are some topography on, on the park sites that just require us to stay in certain in certain areas and not reach out into others.
And then on the Rotary Park as well, you also have to consider that we bridge the top of the landfill cap there. So that's why we are pretty cognizant of how much water we put on that area because it would require pumping off in the spring to mitigate infiltration into the landfill.
Well, I can just say, personal experience, we've had a backyard ice rink, we did it for twenty years. And, and I've never had a very even backyard, it's always been lumpy in every yard I've ever had. And every year it just comes back beautifully and we don't put any plastic down or anything, we just flood it and do it, and every year it's beautiful. So I don't know what my neighbors think and if it flooded into their yards, but it's really a very doable thing, even for people who don't know what we're doing.
Okay, I'm on mute, does anybody else have any questions? Counselor Broadhead, is that just like looking intensive? Okay, I have one more question. And for the Sturgeon River, like I'm worried about what the operating cost potentially could be to try to get the Sturgeon River frozen enough consistently enough that we wouldn't have to worry about somebody falling in during any warm spells. Do we have any idea of what the potential operating costs or range of what it could be?
I'll take a first stab at this, and probably the bigger answer is no right now. So the, a rink on the Sturgeon River won't be like a normal rink in a park like a freeway, it would be like an ice road, which Alberta has pretty robust standards. So that's a good thing, but it would be something substantial much more than what you see at La Combe Lake from what we do because of the moving water and because of the outfalls. So again, before we understand what it would cost, where outfalls would be and how big it would be and what we could accommodate based on our infrastructure, it, we're probably too early to comment on what the operating cost would be for Louise's team.
Okay. Anybody else have something? Mayor has motions into three. Just, that's okay with you, yes? Period, I'd like to, I'd like to split the motion up. So if you wanted to go ahead on the first part for the eight thousand for small freeways. I accept your motion.
Okay. I'm not going to go into too much debate on any of these motions, counsel. I will say to Danielle and Diane, because we had a quick meeting and they kind of explained the problems with the river. And this, these freeway ideas were theirs and I thank them for that. Just watching the public in the last few months and the, the demand for the skating rinks, et cetera, has really just, and, and the fire pits on Halloween night, those kind of simple things make residents so happy. This is an eight thousand dollar ask that I know will go a long, long way. And, and other municipalities do this, and I've always wondered why we don't. So I think this is a good start. I would have preferred the bigger one to, to just go this year, but let's start in Lyons Park. The other nice thing about Lyons Park is it's got lots of trees and there's fire pits there already, et cetera. So I think it'll be a nice little opportunity for January, February, March for our residents to get out of the house, get outdoors, because that's pretty much the limit of recreation we have right now. So nothing further.
Counselor McCrash.
Yeah, sorry, Counselor Hughes, I'm not sure what you can see and what you can't see. It's a lot colder where I am. The, I'm, I obviously am going to support this, this is something we hear consistently back not only from our residents, but it's something that the Recovery Task Force has been looking at doing for almost since we, we started it. I mean, certainly there's been a great deal of interest. And what, I know we're not talking about this particular motion, but there's been a great deal of interest in talking about the availability of skating on the river. It's just so inviting and I can see the carryover, obviously, that we have with people who use the river in the spring and summer. So I mean, I, I can see the, I can see the desire to get out on the river and use it for, for seasons. But the, I think that this first motion, this is, this is something we can do, we can do quickly. And it addresses some of the concerns that we hear back from our residents because it allows us to spread out the availability of ice and gets more people outside. And I think this will be a fantastic idea and hopefully some of the spacing requirements or number requirements will allow us to even allow even more people on there. I'll be there, as soon as I, I might not, I'll be the one on my ankles, but I'll be there.
Anybody else? I'm going to support this, Mayor Heron. I think that eight thousand dollars is a good way to do it, to see how everything works out and is a pilot. And so the operating costs are not substantial on this and it gets the same number of people it is, as the Rotary Park would. So I'll be supporting this. We'll call for the vote. Oh, do you have anything else you want to say, Mayor Heron?
I'm good.
Okay, we'll call for the votes. And that passed unanimously. So go ahead on your second part.
Second motion was about next winter season getting the loop at Rotary Park. Appreciate, I honestly really appreciate Louise and Kate and Danielle, everybody trying to, to see how, how to make this happen instead of saying, no, that's not a good idea. So all the water and, and everything is built into the price, I think it would be really nice to actually start showing residents that we have Rotary Park, like it's kind of an underused park. So I, I think it'll be a little bit bigger freeway, it'll get people down to Rotary Park and expose them to that and I don't know, I just thought it was the next best option for next year.
Anything, anybody have anything on this? Sorry, I cut you off. I thought it was saying twenty, 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 twenty-one initially when I saw this, so forgive me, I didn't realize you were pushing it back a year. I just, I, I'm leaning towards a no, but not because it's a bad idea, but because I'd like to see how it works on Lyons Park first and then have it come back potentially like in the spring or summer to make a decision about what we've learned from doing it the first time and see if we still think it will cost thirty-four thousand or other ramifications that we're going to forward or the other ones. So I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I'm just not sure about the timing, and maybe we should just learn the lessons before we commit to doing it to a larger and a much more expensive scale. That's kind of where I was hesitant on this one. But I'll listen to what you have to say. We're closing, oh, Counselor Mackay.
I, I just wanted to echo your, your concerns, Counselor Hughes. I mean, I, I think this is a fantastic idea for all the reasons why I supported the, the freeway loop in the Lyons Park, but I think even with the the timeframe and it might give administration that extra time necessity to procure a third party to transport the water. I just, I think that maybe what we needed to do was learn the lessons that we are going to learn this year, this winter season, and then apply them. I, I love the idea, I think we should be maybe I, maybe bringing it back after we get a, some feedback from administration on, on how it worked. And I, and I, I take your point about, you know, the Rotary is can be seen as an unknown gem for some people, but the people who know it, know it. And they know it for a lot of reasons. Um, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm really hesitant on, on the money at this particular time, although we're only talking projected thirty-four, uh, thousand dollars right now. So I'll wait for your closing arguments, Madam Mayor, but I, I'm just thinking there's some learnings that we can do here.
Councilor Jones, and then Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, um, Mayor Heron. I'm, I'm delighted with all of these motions. Um, this particular one I'm supportive of, would have loved to see it this year. Uh, certainly there's demand for, for family skating this year at all of our parks. Um, but, uh, I would love to see this happen next year. And in terms of the concerns about learning, um, learning from the experience at Lions Park, I have no concerns, just because this is done widely in the region with no problems, like Councilor Hanson was mentioning with her backyard hockey rink. We know this works because people have been doing it for, for really decades in the region. So, um, and even St. Albert's been doing it for a long time with some of our flooded areas. So thank you for bringing these forwards, and I'll be very happy to support this motion.
Councilor Hanson.
Thank you. Uh, me too. Um, I'm just, um, as, I know that our ODRs or outdoor rinks get used well, and, and they're, they're under a little bit of strain right now because of the amounts of people that want to use them and, and the restrictions. But, uh, skating on a, on a, um, freeze way is just a different experience, and it's lovely as you move forward. You don't have to worry about having a hockey player, uh, zoom by you and hit a board. Um, it's just such a lovely way to spend some time with your family and, um, a different experience. And I'm, I'm so glad that we're going to be able to bring this to our residents. I think it's going to be really well received. So I applaud you for bringing it forward, and thank you to staff for being so open to this because it's not like you don't, guys don't have enough to do.
Anyone else? Mayor Heron, you close.
Uh, yeah, I think actually Councilor Jolly said it right well about the, about the learnings. I don't think we need to wait to get learnings from Lions Park because this is done everywhere. And, uh, you, staff have already talked to some other municipalities about this, so I'm not really concerned about that. Um, if it really doesn't work, okay. I'm pretty sure Rack will bring it back and say, don't do this in, in twenty-two, so I'm not concerned about that. Um, I, I do need to actually say the same thing that Jackie did and thank Danielle and Diane for our quick little conversation. Um, the motion was about skating on the river originally, and this is the feedback that got back. But from what I can tell, uh, there's a lot of excitement even within staff to get this going, uh, because they're all there just as we are to, to serve the public and try to get through this COVID disaster. And it's a small thing we can do, um, this year, and hopefully it generates. What we're learning in the Recovery Task Force is that the community is going to need to bounce back, and that kind of community connection will be, will go into the future and as a benefit of the pandemic. It's a, it's a bonus that people want to spend time with their families and, and be outside and recreating. So I think that's going to last for a very, very long time, and, and that's a recommendation coming out of, um, the Recovery Task Force. So spontaneous recreation outdoors, this is, this is where it is. And the, the reason I chose Rotary Park is just because it's bigger. That's all. Nothing further.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. And that's unanimous. I had a question before you put for the third one, Mayor Heron. Um, and that, I should have thought of it earlier, but I apologize for that. Is that, are we going to be putting benches out so people can change their skates? Is that, has that been included in the cost of some kind of portable benches? So they're not sitting in the snow or mud or whatever it happens to be?
Uh, I can take that, Danielle. We have, um, picnic tables, some foldable picnic tables that we use for special events. Uh, and what we're doing at some of the sites, and same with Kingswood as well, is we'll just freeze them into the snow. And so that's really no cost. We own these benches, they're not very well utilized over the winter, so we will just put those out as needed. They are, aren't necessarily the most durable items, and so we'll see how they go. Um, but yes, we can certainly accommodate that internally.
Okay, I just wanted to double check on that, that's all, because that's, uh, something that we have thought of. Councilor Jolly, have a question?
Yeah, this is, I don't know who this is to, and, and I know the answer to this, so forgive me, but why isn't it safe to just skate on the river right now? Like, why can't I just go out there right now with my kids?
I guess I'll take a first stab, and Danielle can help me out if need be. Um, so over the last probably twenty years, we've seen quite a few storm outfalls that have been constructed along the river that support all of the stormwater, um, that's generated within each of our neighborhoods. Um, so within, that keeps water moving all throughout the year, whether it's through some pumps or through, um, freeze thaw cycles that do happen even when it's bright out in the Alberta weather. So those outfalls are constantly moving and pushing water into the river, which does create some challenges around those areas. Additionally, um, we do have quite a few, um, particulates or chemicals in essence that gets collected, um, whether it's through groundwater, whether it's through, um, road operations that do add to the water, which makes it a more challenging, um, fluid to freeze. Um, so that does create some challenges. So what we want to do is make sure we look at the safest place to contemplate skating on, on the river. Um, Danielle, anything else?
No, I think that's a great answer, Kate. I think the only other answer would be that Mother Nature needs to comply with us to get us the ice thicknesses that we need, and we don't always get that either with the, the warm weathers we're experiencing now, sometimes in December and January that we never historically had. So that just adds another layer and flavor to the, to the dynamic to find that sweet spot of safety, public safety and staff safety in terms of maintaining those ice surfaces for the public.
Okay, thank you. So just the difference from, you know, when my dad skated on, on the river in the, in the sixties and, and when I did in the eighties is just because of all those additional outfalls. Is that, is that right?
Yes, primarily.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Mayor Heron, go for it for your last part.
Sure. Uh, and Councilor Jolly, just to answer that a bit, if you actually go onto our firefighters' Facebook page right now, they actually put out a, uh, safety warning today, uh, because there has been some clearing of the Sturgeon River right outside City Hall, uh, and people have been on it. And the firefighters put out the warning, and they also actually showed a bunch of pictures of how the, the river is not frozen right now. There's lots of holes in it, so, yeah, it's, it's not safe right now. So that's, that's, I think this is a good suggestion, is to hire somebody who really has an understanding of this. I do believe there are sections of the river and maybe close to Rotary Park. So maybe if we had a freeze way at Rotary Park, and then you could get onto the ice by where the little canoe boat launches, because there's very few storm outfalls along that section. When you get closer to the more dense areas, if there's more storm outfalls. So I don't know, I think this is a great motion. Uh, I, I honestly, I'm, I think we have to support this because, um, the question comes up every year. If, for those of you who've been on council for a while, it comes up every year, why can't we skate on the river? And we always have been given, uh, why not? And so that's why I structured my, um, IR to say, how can we make it happen? And Kevin and his team have come up with how we can make this happen. It's a small amount of money that will bring a lot of pleasure, um, to residents of St. Albert if we can make it happen. Uh, Jackie was talking about the difference between, uh, skating on a rink and skating on a, on a pathway kind of thing. If you just think of how popular the canals in Quebec City are, different situation, but they are super popular. So when they are, uh, working and up and running, people love them. So I think this is worth, uh, the investment to see if it's possible. Nothing further.
Anybody have anything they want to say? So I'll tell you, Mayor Heron, I was hesitant on this one, but you kind of talked me into it. Um, the only thing I would also ask administration is when they come forward, if it happens to be somewhere near Rotary Park, um, that we need to recognize will be parking problems. If we have two ice surfaces coming forward, there's not the parking for sixty cars in that area. Um, so it has to not only be the ice is possible, but also how we deal with the unintended consequences of popularity at the same time. But we'll give it a shot and see what it says. Does anybody else have anything you want to say? Okay, I'll call for the votes. And that passes unanimously, so I have the chair back to you.
All right, thank you. Um, information requests, notice the motions or announcements. Go ahead, Councilor McCrash.
Um, I just caught Tony's comment in the chat. And I, um, I, I want to recognize, uh, that comment of collaboration, commitment and staff. Thank you, Tony, but I also probably, is this Tony's last council meeting?
Might be, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know, Mayor, but I just want to recognize that in my three years on council, I found Tony as somebody that, uh, was easily, uh, one of the most qualified people I've ever had the pleasure of working with. And, uh, he will definitely be missed. I can remember the first, I think we were on the bus, and he was showing, or trying to show me the different types of asphalt that were being used on the road, and I think that was just in his new role, and I don't even know if he was convinced. But, uh, anyways, I just want to say, uh, thank you, Tony, uh, for everything you've done, uh, for our community. So we are, we're, as, um, Jackie said, we'll miss you. So, and I'm, I'll miss, I'll miss, I don't know where you get that background. It looks like you're in some sort of a boys' school somewhere. Oh, it's a new boy, it's a new background. It's not the bed this time.
No, it's, it's the doghouse. Okay, so I thank you for that. Those, uh, comments are appreciated, um, sincerely. Um, and for those members who haven't read my, uh, note, basically, I think I just, I feel really great leaving, um, the organization with the team that, uh, you have, uh, an incredible amount of, uh, skill there and, um, desire to collaborate and consider all functions of, um, residents and councils, um, requests, whether it be, um, liability, costs, uh, service levels, uh, continuation of program, all those sorts of things. Um, you are, uh, definitely well looked after by the crew that you have hired. So thank you for that, and thank you for the privilege of being able to work with you and them. So, yeah, thank you.
Uh, thank you for that reminder, Ken, and I'll just add, I'll just echo everything Ken said, Tony, we will, we will miss you. Um, I'm sure you're going to enjoy the next phase of your life and have a Merry Christmas. Yep. All right, uh, there's no presentations, uh, there's no business arising. Uh, Kevin told me earlier that he didn't have anything pressing for in camera. Does anyone else want to go in camera?
I had a question.
Is there a hand up?
I, I had a question, not for in camera, but before, you just missed me waving.
Oh, I'm so sorry for, uh, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Then, like, I don't need information question, but I thought I'd ask. Um, Tony, if you're still there, like, I, I just wanted to say, like, you are, you are genuinely a nice individual that, you know, like, some people kind of get into their heads and think whatever about themselves as they climb the ranks of the world, and you are an exception to that. Like, I, you are, you do it every, your job beyond competently, and you do it professionally and nice. Like, you're, you'd be a nice boss to have. Um, so at least from our perspective of not having a report to you. Um, so I just, I, I, you are going to be well, well missed by everybody in the organization. Um, so I'm sad to see you go, but I'm happy that you get to go and sleep in a few mornings for a change. Um, but I had a question for Mr. Scobal. I've had some people ask him, so I thought I'll just clear the air. The voting machines that we're using, are they the same ones that they use in the States for the election? Or are we using a different brand or?
I sure hope David's still online, because I have no idea.
If he wants to.
I am on the line, and the answer is we are using the Dominion voting machines because they have served us very reliably in the past, and there is zero evidence that there's any problems with them.
Okay, okay, I was just asking, so, uh, thank you. Okay, that was it, thank you.
All right, um, Councilor Broadhead, yeah.
Sorry, just a question. Mine's, mine's easy too. Uh, this declaration, is it too early to sign this and send it in, or do we have to wait until the new year or?
You can, you can do it now if you want.
Well, you. Yeah, we can do it now and submit it?
Yeah.
You, you have to wait till January first.
Oh.
Talking about the declaration in terms of you, what you're being.
Okay, but Diane told us to send it in mid to late December, no?
Yeah, no, he's referring to the related party disclosures, and those can be submitted anytime now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about your nomination papers.
Oh, no. Well, I haven't made that decision yet.
I didn't mean to nudge you along, sorry.
Nudge, nudge. That's fine, yeah.
It's all good.
Why didn't you ask me to be your campaign chairman then?
Um, do, Ken, did you want to bring up the clearing of the sidewalk on the bridge on Boudreaux?
Well, I mean, I guess, but if that's the only thing to go into, uh. No, I don't think we do. I mean, it's public information. I mean, I don't know what Mr. Scobal feels comfortable doing.
Oh, well, you know, I, it's in the council inquiry system, we can get back to it. I mean, I didn't receive it till half an hour before council, so I haven't had, I haven't had a chance to follow up with staff yet on it or anything.
Yeah, so I mean. In the system right now, Kevin?
No, there was a previous one.
Yeah, it's, Ken didn't send it back there. He just sent it to you saying.
I've got it. I'll, I'll action it and provide council some, some feedback on it.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and please take, um, like my other comments and for all council, it was just in relation to the Boudreaux Bridge. I CC'd you on it, but it, um, I recognize the impact on staff, so whenever we get a response back, that'll be great.
All right, so I'm seeing no burning desire to go in camera with Kevin. Is that correct? Okay, and what about with just us counselors? Look at that. All right, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting at six twenty-three PM and wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
You know, I was so jealous of you, because when the sun was setting, uh, where, you're somewhere near, you're in Mexico, the sun was setting, and there was this beautiful silhouette of a palm tree on the wall behind you. I'm like, oh, that looks beautiful. Did you guys notice that?